Preliminary matter. This is Brian Waller, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Biswas? Nothing.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Perfect.
Oh, I don't know what just happened, but I'm here.
And Attorney Murphy?
Good evening.
Thank you.
You forgot me.
We can hear you. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order. Which, I know there's a newer order, but subject to that order. In order to... This order, which you can find posted to the town's website at www.grafton-ma.gov, allows bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is convening in a hybrid fashion via Zoom and in person, as posted on the meeting agenda, posted on the Town of Grafton Please be aware, those on the Zoom, that other folks may be able to see you and take care of not the screen share of your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording and may be visible by others. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Public has courage to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. So, we will turn to the first item on the agenda. So, the ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude, I'll go down the line of members, inviting them to comment. And please hold comments until your name is called. Anyone on the phone, please use the raise hand feature if you wish to speak. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan Hill to discuss the Safe Harbor process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the boards. So, I'm happy to kind of lay out the procedures for the board's decision-making and public hearings when you're in Safe Harbor, but to be honest, it's pretty short and concise. So, I'm happy to answer any questions as well. Now, with the board being in Safe Harbor, and I actually haven't seen the certification, so, you know, if there's any question of whether or not you're in Safe Harbor or not, we can certainly get into that. But assuming that you have the certification from DHCD, then the processes that you still open the public hearing, the rules still apply. You have to open the public hearing within 40 days. And then you must, within 15 days of holding the public hearing, invoke the Safe Harbor, invoke the, you know, whatever the ground is, if it's housing production or something else, you still have to invoke that within 15 days of opening the public hearing. And you have to send a notice of that to the applicant as well as DHCD. So, you could do that actually at the first meeting, at the first public hearing. And this is all governed by 760 CMR 56.038. And it states, "Within 15 days of the opening of the hearing, the board shall provide written notice to the applicant with a copy to DHCD that it considers a denial of permit or impositions of conditions consistent with local needs and the grounds it believes that that has been met with a factual basis for that position, including any necessary supporting documentation." But again, if you have a certification from DHCD, then that's all you need. And you just basically put the applicant on notice that you have reached, that you feel that you have Safe Harbor and you have the ability to deny the permit if you conduct the hearing. The applicant has an opportunity to appeal that. And if they feel like it's not legitimate for some reason, the applicant can challenge that assertion by, again, within 15 days of receiving that notice, file basically an appeal to DHCD challenging the assertion. DHCD then makes a decision within 30 days. And whatever that decision is, that can then be further appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. It doesn't sound like we're going to have that issue here since it's not really a contested Safe Harbor, but that would be the procedure. And you do absolutely have to invoke the Safe Harbor and put the developer on notice within 15 days of opening the hearing, and you have to do it in writing. So as long as you meet those benchmarks, then you're safe. And then you can conduct the hearing as long or as short as you want. Again, because you're in Safe Harbor, you actually don't have to really do anything. You can conduct the hearing in one night, you can close the hearing, and you can issue a denial decision if you'd like. If you still want to entertain the project and you feel like it has some merit, and you feel like you might be able to impose some conditions on the project that might make it acceptable, and if the need for housing, even though you're in Safe Harbor still, is great and you want to approve a project, then my recommendation would be to conduct a full hearing. Do your typical peer review, consider the waivers that are being requested, and then collect as much evidence as you need from experts, from your own peer reviewers, from the public, and then close the hearing and deliberate as we normally do in these projects. So that's really it. I mean, Dennis, do you have any, anything to add to what I've said? I mean, you've been through this a few more times than I have.
Yeah. One clarification for everyone is that if there is an appeal from the DHCD ruling to the HAC, the public hearing is automatically stayed. You don't have the option to go forward with the hearing if that happens. But otherwise, what you said is exactly right.
Right. And the clock is still in effect. So even though you're in Safe Harbor, we still have the 180-day clock. That isn't like waived or anything. So you still have to open and close the hearing in six months. Of course, the difference is that you have all the leverage. So if the applicant is not working with you and you need to extend it beyond six months and the applicant says no, then of course you can just close the hearing and deny the projects. Because if you are in Safe Harbor, whatever decision you make is essentially immune from appeal.
Mr. Tuskert?
Dan, I just want to be clear. At the beginning, I thought you were basically saying we would have to deny it within 15 days or move forward like a regular 40B. But actually, at the end, I guess what I was hearing was, what we probably should be doing is notifying the applicant that we're in Safe Harbor, but perhaps continue. This is a lip, so in theory, it's something that we want to do. So continue to go through our normal process, right? Negotiate, do what we need to do, listen to public hearing, public comment. But we can get all the way to the end of that process. And if he hasn't given us the buffering we wanted, or he hasn't tied into the sewers, and I'm obviously citing Frontis Place here, if he hasn't done those things, then we could deny based on the Safe Harbor. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. That's right. Yeah. You're not denying it at, within 15 days. All you're doing is invoking Safe Harbor. You're just saying, "We have the right to make any decision we want at the end of this hearing. And we have the right to close this hearing in a month or six months. And we are going to proceed with the hearing." If you want, you can proceed with the hearing as you just stated, and do what you normally do with every 40B project. And then you can decide at the end of the hearing whether the applicant has done enough to satisfy you, and you make your decision accordingly.
Okay. Or, of course, we could deny it right out the gate, right? We could, that night, say, "We all don't like this thing. We're in Safe Harbor, deny." We could do that as well if we wanted to, right?
Yes. I'm not aware of any case law or cases that suggest that that's bad faith. I mean, Dennis, do you know any reason why they couldn't do that?
No. No reason. Rules allow that.
Okay. Yeah. I don't know of a board that's done that. I mean, I haven't personally been involved in one, but presumably, a board has probably done that in the past.
Um, can I continue?
Please.
So, right now, our Safe Harbor letter, as I understand it, is good through March of '24, effectively for about a year.
So we are in Safe Harbor?
Yes.
Oh.
Just out of curiosity, Dan, what happens if we fall out of Safe? Let's, as you know, we've been known to go a year with some of these applications. What happens if we fall out of Safe Harbor during the middle of the application? I suppose at that point, it's kind of, Safe Harbor is off the table, goes away?
Well, that's a good question. I think you still have the right to deny the project because when the project was applied for, you were in Safe Harbor. That being said, I suppose the applicant could withdraw the application and reapply.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I think it's a situation we want to avoid, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Ideally, see, I mean, again, the whole point of Housing Production Plan is to keep it going, right? So you've got Safe Harbor, and it'd be great if you guys can come up with another friendly 40B project or a friendly affordable housing project that keeps the momentum going until you get to 10%.
Yep.
How far off are we from the 10% right now as a town?
We're away. Let's just say we are aways. We're not necessarily close yet. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, Matt Ali.
And am I correct that there's a new census coming out in May?
Wait. I thought the numbers we had were based on the new census.
Okay.
Yeah, the 2020 census.
I don't think so. I don't think DHCD has put the new numbers up. I'll check right now, but I don't think, I don't think they've readjusted the 10% denominator.
That could be. I know, I know we've talked about it. That could be.
And you'll have to forgive my ignorance here, but how would it be, how would it appear if we were to deny something pretty upfront when we haven't met our 10% as a town? How do those two correlate with each other? What are the impacts?
There's no, there's no correlation, there's no repercussions. The whole point of having the Housing Production Plan regulations and having Safe Harbor is you have the right to deny it. And, because you have done, you've done what the state has asked you to do. You've actually permitted projects, affordable housing projects, to get to this benchmark. So it's, I mean, it's legally...
So it doesn't matter that we haven't reached our 10%?
No. No. Because that's the whole point. The point of the regulation was to allow towns some, a reprieve when you're actually doing the right thing to make progress towards reaching the 10%.
I see. Thank you for that clarification.
Just one more. So, Dan, we are, we have lips that are coming through. There's a few in the pipeline at this point. That doesn't, the fact that it's a lip doesn't change anything with what you've said here, right?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Yelwens.
Yes. Thank you. Dan, I just have a question, a further clarification on the, my understanding is the board has 15 days to, of the opening of the hearing and to the opportunity to deny that 40B permit from going forward. And my understanding of that, and again, further clarification if you would, is that from the opening date of the hearing, we need to make a decision within 15 days if we're going to invoke Safe Harbor against that lip going forward. And that we can, we can open the hearing, we can hear that first night of testimony, and we can make a decision on that particular project on that same evening and invoke Safe Harbor. And by so doing, if it's the wishes, if it's the wish of the board, to not allow that project to go forward by invoking that Safe Harbor. So that 15-day rule, I'm not of the same understanding that we can go through the whole process and then, at the end of it, decide. I think it, to me, it clearly states that the, it's 15 days of the opening hearing for that comprehensive permit, and we must provide written notice to the applicant and a copy to DHCD describing which Safe Harbor has been achieved with supporting documentation. So I'm a little confused on that.
So, the vote that you take within 15 days, or even on the first night, which is what I would recommend, is you're only saying, you're basically voting to assert the Safe Harbor, but you're basically asserting it and putting it in your pocket and then playing that card whenever you want down the road. You're not voting to deny the project within 15 days. You're just voting to say, "If we want to deny the project, we can because we're in Safe Harbor." Does that make sense?
So what you're saying is that we could, we could invoke Safe Harbor and we could hear the project and then decide if we wanted to invoke the Safe Harbor and vote the project to basically stop the project from going forward?
Well, just to be clear in the terminology, when I say invoke, what I'm saying is you're, you're asserting your right. You're asserting your right to deny. You're not saying I'm denying it. I'm just asserting my right to deny the project.
To notify the applicant.
So that's what has to happen within 15 days. You have to assert your right to deny it, but then you don't have to deny it. You can approve it. You can do whatever you want. You can approve it with conditions, or you can deny it. And you could do that next week, or you can do that in six months. But all you have to do upfront, and the reason, the reason, this is kind of counterintuitive, but the reason that the state wants you to do this is because they don't want you to assert this right after doing a whole hearing and then surprising the developer six months later by saying, "Ha-ha, we have the right to deny your project." You just wasted six months. Because that, and that actually is how it used to be. So before, I don't know when these were amended, 2012? Before these regs were amended, that's what we used to do. If we knew we had an argument, like 10% or 1.5%, we might just hold that in our pocket. And we might just play that card at the very end to say to the developer, you know, "You're out of luck. We have 10%." Of course, we then litigate that at the Housing Appeals Committee. But this way, you're front-loading that question, that legal question. And, you know, in a way, it is fair for a developer. I mean, if you're an applicant, it's kind of unfair to make you go through this entire process if, at the end of the process, you have no ability to appeal. So the regulation does make sense. It's just that it's, it front-loads essentially this issue. And, you know, honestly, a lot of towns aren't as sophisticated as you guys are, and they don't even think about this until it's too late. I've been in front of boards where they don't even realize they have a 15-day deadline. So you're way out in front of it, but that's, that's all you have to do within 15 days is just assert your right to, to have this, this right to deny the project or make whatever decision you want to make on it.
And Bill, I think it puts us in a much better position. Imagine in Frontis Place, if we were in this situation where we could deny it at the end, you know, we would have been in a stronger negotiating position as we went through and were demanding things then. So, you know, I think it, you know, puts the developer on notice that, you know, we have the upper hand and, you know, kind of makes it so that hopefully they will negotiate a little bit more earnestly than they would otherwise, perhaps. You know, let's be honest. I mean, if we're not in Safe Harbor, they have the upper hand. So, I like the process. I'm pleased to hear, I was of the impression that we either needed to not deny it upfront. I like the idea that we can actually go through our process. I think we do a great job of, you know, forming these projects into decent, you know, projects. And now we have a little bit more power to be more effective, even more effective doing that, so.
So, just to clarify, and I'll come to Kay and Matt Ali next. Once we invoke Safe Harbor, then the developer can make the decision whether they want to go through the process and negotiate, knowing that it could be denied based on Safe Harbor, or to withdraw and come back.
Yeah. Good point.
Yep.
And at the end, if we did invoke Safe Harbor, listened to the, and decided to listen to it, listened to the whole thing, then denied it, they can't appeal? Is that what you said? Or they can appeal?
They, well, I, I mean, Dennis, I...
They can't appeal to the HAC. The Housing Appeals Committee is off the table if there's a denial during Safe Harbor. No developer that I'm aware of has ever appealed to court. So the practical effect of invoking Safe Harbor is that the developer has to sell you on the merits of their project without threatening the board that we're going to take it on appeal to the state.
Yeah. Neither one of us, Dennis and I, do a ton of this work. We're not aware of any case where a developer actually tried to appeal a Safe Harbor decision. And I can't, I mean, I'm not saying it could never happen. I mean, I suppose some developer with some creative lawyers might come up with some argument, but, you know, I'm sitting here today, I can't think of any reason why they would have any, any grounds to challenge a decision.
Or from a time standpoint, it's going to take, you know, Safe Harbor's going to be expired by the time they get it resolved. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. So I have a, I want to be clear as well. So is, and I may have missed this, Dan, excuse me if you said this right at the beginning, I may have not been focusing. So is this something that's new, that's just start, that is it, is there new regulations that are allowing towns to do this, or is this something we had all along and we, and now we're realizing we can do Safe Harbor? And...
No. The housing, so the housing production regulations have been around for maybe 10 years or longer. And so what, what might be new to Grafton is that maybe this is, maybe this is the first time you've actually achieved the Safe Harbor under housing production. And what that means is that you've allowed, permitted enough affordable units that equal, you know, 0.5% of your total housing stock. So that, if that's, if you've done that, and whatever number that is, I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but there's some, every town has a threshold of 0.5%. And so that's, if you've achieved that, and if you...
So 0.5% versus 10%, which is what the state requires for every town? That's low. And we're obviously above that, right?
But that's for one year. So what, what, what housing production means is in one calendar year, if you've produced enough housing to meet that threshold in one calendar year, then the next 12 months, you're in Safe Harbor.
So as a board, just saying this to everybody on the board, what would, I mean, what would make us, how would we decide if we wanted to deny a particular project? Would we need to go through the steps of having the abutters come in that, you know, are going to hate this project? I mean, how do we, because we've always worked with 40Bs and tried to work with them and gone through the waivers and they, you know, as long as I've been on the board for nine years, we've made 40Bs, they've, they've gone through because we needed to meet our 10%. What would be the case where we'd go, "Absolutely not. Where there's no way we're going to want to work with this developer on this particular 40B project." I mean, can, I don't know who wants to talk about that, but we still need to meet our 10% overall, but it would just be that the project's just so negative that we just don't even want to look at it this year, and they can try next year and come back?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, most towns that, that I work in and most local officials that I deal with would say, "If there's some redeeming qualities to this project that we could shape and, you know, if we could, if we could deal with the adverse impacts, there might be a benefit to approving this because that might extend the State Harbor for yet another year." So that, and, so it really, it's really a fact-based kind of inquiry, right? Every, every project's different, and if this project is so abhorrent that has no redeeming value, then I, I don't know, I don't know why the board would, would approve it, right? So, and the developer should, should understand that. It's very, it's actually pretty unusual for developers to proceed with 40B projects in light of a Safe Harbor unless they've really already kind of paved the way with, you know, conversations with the, with the boards or, you know, it's a town-sponsored project. I mean, we see, we see that quite a bit, even in Safe Harbor, some towns are, you know, sponsoring their own projects to extend Safe Harbors. This is, this is very unusual. So I, but yeah, my advice is, is to conduct a good faith hearing and find out what you can about the project, collect evidence about any adverse impacts. As you guys know, the standard of review under the statute is very clear. It's, you're the way that the housing need, the need for affordable housing against things like the need to protect the health and safety of the future occupants and of the residents of Grafton, the need to promote more sensible layout of buildings and driveways and infrastructure, the need to protect open space. These are the factors that you consider in any 40B project. And so in this case, it's always a balancing test. In this case, on the housing need side, there is no housing need because you are considered to be in compliance with your housing need. You're in Safe Harbor.
Right.
So a project would really have to be very good on the other side, that there's no adverse impacts and there's a, there's a, a strong public benefit to approving the project, I would think, in order to approve a project while you're in Safe Harbor.
And is this something that we could invoke in the next 15 days on 59 Pleasant Street that we're seeing this evening?
We're seeing that next week.
We're seeing that next week. Okay. Oh, okay. So, so a new one, that we've got all this materials and all the work they've done already. We could still look at that and say, "If we don't like it, we could say we want to be, we're in Safe Harbor." Okay. And Dan, you're suggesting that we should, we should do this because we are in, just to give ourselves the breathing room, because we are where, because we're fortunate enough to be in it, that you suggest we should do this with any project coming up while we're in this position?
Do what? Hold a hearing?
Holding, no, to have, to invoke Safe Harbor on any 40B project coming up.
Yeah. You, in my, my opinion, you should always invoke the Safe Harbor if you have the right to do it. Even if it's a project you absolutely love, right? There's nothing wrong with it. It's a beautiful project. I love it.
Better to just do it.
You always just invoke it so that if you need to, you have the ability to negotiate, to have leverage. The last thing you want, ever want to do is put yourself in a position of tying your hand behind your back and not being able to, to play that card at the end of the project.
And then a year, when did, when were we designated Safe Harbor? When did that happen to our town? This, like, beginning of the year, or when did that?
About a year ago.
A year ago.
Was it a two-year Safe Harbor?
Yeah. How long was that?
It was a two-year Safe Harbor. The Select Board was notified in 2021.
Okay.
The letter to the Select Board when we achieved Safe Harbor was for a two-year period.
Okay. And we didn't see a here 40B last year, so we would not have invoked it, right? I'm trying to, they all kind of blend together. Okay.
If I may.
Matt Ali? I'll come back to you.
So if I understand correctly, we are already in Safe Harbor. We are now just telling the developer within this 15-day period that we're in Safe Harbor. And then the developer chooses whether or not to proceed. And if the developer chooses to proceed, then we sort of conduct our hearing the way we would normally conduct. And if the developer chooses to proceed, then we sort of conduct our hearing the way we would normally conduct it. They present it, the public would come and talk, give their opinions, et cetera. And anytime during that period, we can deny it because we're in safe harbor. That's, is that correct?
Within 180 days, correct? 186 months?
Yeah, you still have to comply with the rules. And maybe that's a ground that the developer might argue on an appeal if you didn't comply with a rule or, you know, maybe you didn't conduct the hearing the right way. So you, so you still have to conduct the hearing in accordance with all the rules. But at, at the end of the hearing, you get to close the hearing whenever you want, and then you get to make whatever decision you, you want to make.
And I think someone was mentioning, if our two-year safe harbor runs out while the application is in process, I, I didn't, I didn't follow what happens then.
Yeah, so I just looked it up, and so your safe harbor expires on March 6th of 2024. So if this hearing is still open, I, I don't know for sure, but I, my understanding would be that because the application was filed when you were in safe harbor and you invoked it, whatever decision you make on this application is, is subject to that safe harbor. And even if it comes after March 6th of 2024. That being said, if you fall out of safe harbor, I mean, you should all, obviously know that even if you were to invoke that decision, it doesn't, it's not going to stop the developer from turning around and re-filing. And I, and Dennis, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just, from a practical standpoint, I don't think it really matters. I think if you're, if you're out of safe harbor, the developer would have the ability to refile and then not, and then not be subject to this safe harbor.
Yeah, that's right, Dan. We have that issue in Walpole, multiple 40B applications from the same developer for the same project, trying to fit it in where safe harbor, there's a gap. Another way to think about it is with a DHCD certification, that's an empirical fact, that the town is certified to be in safe harbor. So unless the board wishes to waive that, then you have to invoke it because this consequence of not actually voting to invoke it within 15 days is you waive it. And why would you waive something that's true?
And so if we waived it or inadvertently waived it, then we would have to, then, then what happens? You basically have to approve a housing project that comes before you to meet your 10% quota?
You don't have to approve it. It just means that the normal rules apply. Whatever, just like before safe harbor, if you, if you have grounds to deny it or impose conditions, then you, you can do that. But the, the leverage is much more in the developer's hands than, than yours, as, as we know, and so, but, but if, but if this project has a lot of flaws to it, and, and these are grounds for denial of it anyway, then you, you still have the right to deny it. You just have to defend that denial under the rules that are not particularly that advantageous to, you know, to towns.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes, thank you. Just so I'm clear, then at the first hearing for the Pleasant Street project, we have to vote on a motion to invoke safe harbor at that hearing. That will ensure that we are invoking that motion within 15 days of the opening of the hearing. So the developer would then be so notified that he's operating under the premise that the board at any time can invoke and take a motion to invoke the safe harbor against the project. Is that clear?
I think, if I can, I think we've already invoked it. We could vote to deny it based on our safe harbor status at any point after we've invoked it. You know, after one meeting or after five months.
But we just have to do it within that 15-day window.
To invoke it initially.
Right.
All invoking does is reserve the right to use it.
That's a good way to-
It reserves us the right to use it. At the end of the project, at the end of the process, we can decide we want to deny this because we have enough housing, or we've been, we've been meeting our housing plan, and we're going to invoke safe harbor and deny it if we wanted to. It just reserves the right, invoking it upfront reserves the right to use it at a later point in the process.
If we deny it right away, how long before they can come back? Is it two years? For some reason, I've always heard two years, but.
The, the cooling off, the, um, the cooling off period does not apply to, to affordable housing. So it's not, that, that would, what you're talking about, Peter, I think is, is if, if someone applied for a, a special permit or something, or subdivision and got denied, I believe it's a one-year cooling off period between the date of that withdrawal or denial and their ability to then apply for a 40B project.
So- How, how about this, though? If we invoke 40, um, safe harbor, but then refuse to hear it, can they just reapply?
Well, they, my guess is they would reapply on March 7th, 2024, when we're out of safe harbor.
Right.
So unlike 48 cases where you have the two-year waiting period, so we deny a special permit or variance, they have to go away for two years. That doesn't apply to 40B. Doesn't apply at all.
Right.
So in theory, I, I, I think to answer your question, if we denied it, in theory, they probably come in the next day and apply again.
But would do it the same thing, probably.
I, one would think.
Now, is there a way to keep continuously in safe harbor? Just approve other developments?
That, that is one of the advantages, and the select board has discussed this, with the LIP projects. One of the reasons that they are approving the LIP projects is because we need to keep our production going, our housing production going. And, and we have to remember, we're not in safe harbor because we've met 10% affordable.
Right.
We are in safe harbor because we have been producing affordable housing at a rate that satisfies the state. So we want to, the select board believes we want to try to keep producing housing at that rate or more so that we can stay in safe harbor.
Yeah.
And is that a derogatory number that the state just looks at everything and then they decide, hey, Grafton's doing a great job? Or is it an actual percentage and a number that they look at?
It's an actual number.
And so they actually look at what we've, the town has allowed to be developed? Okay, sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, we need to provide that information. The town planner did a lot of work to put together the whole package and, and provide the information. And the state reviews it and certifies it.
And then in, and in March of next year, we could still, we could, could it be redone? We could still be in safe harbor? Mark, because we're continuing to do-
If we continue to produce housing. So that's, you know, so, so in theory, we would have to approve some projects, and they would have to, you know, get off the ground, and, and we would have to be showing that we're producing housing.
So I, I think it would be good to know what that number is.
Yeah.
You don't, we don't know?
I'm, I think it's, we can figure it out.
Yeah, we do. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, it's a known number.
Are you talking about the, the 0.5%?
Right.
It's 36. So right now, it's 36 under the 2010 census. But when the 2020 census finally gets published on DHCD's website, which still hasn't, but they've been, they've been saying it's going to for, for the last, you know, six months, and it still hasn't been put up there. But eventually DHCD will update this, and so whatever that number is, it's, it's a percentage of your total housing. So as of 2010, you had 7, 7,160 units. So the 0.5% is 36. But that, if you, if you've created more housing overall in town, which you probably have, right? Then that, that number is probably going to go up a little bit.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yeomans?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a point on that, the, the, the 10% target on, based on the 2010 census was 776. It's anticipated that the 2020 census shows us at 7,760 residential housing units. Based on the history of the past, our new 10% number will be 776. I'd like to point out, and Dan, you just mentioned the number of 39, that the, the housing units at Prentice Place are still not counted into the totals at the DHCD. The housing units at the approved project that's being pulled by, built by Pulte on Route 30 over near Tufts, along with the Alfonso Project, that is going to contain 54 affordable units. And so there we have 93. In addition, the project Fisherville Terrace on West Main Street that is underway, matter of fact, we're going to be discussing that later this evening, those 100 duplexes, those are purchased duplexes. And as a purchased 40B project, only 25 of those can count towards our affordable. So those 25 units are not yet counted. They cannot be counted until the building permit is issued for that project because the, that 760 regulations state that if there's a time lapse, such as was the case with Fisherville Terrace of 10 years, then those residential housing units, the affordable housing unit component of that project cannot be counted until building permits have been issued. So my records indicate that we have 115 more affordable housing units that have yet to be counted in, you know, towards our, our 10% target. So, you know, I'm of the opinion that even without this project being approved, that we'll be able to meet our affordable housing unit target in, you know, beyond the March 24th. Because I, and I've looked closely at this over the past, you know, many months. And during last year, with a former town planner, I was somewhat astounded that Prentice Place had not been counted yet. And the fact is that when, when a 40B project is approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the, the developer has a right to appeal that, as, as the Prentice Place developer did, and it went to hack, and then we settled, we had negotiations, and all of that was settled. Then it was filed with the town clerk. When the project is filed with the town clerk, it can be submitted for inclusion to the Department of Housing and Community Development. For some reason, Prentice Place is, it's in the works now. I have to say that, that the, the town planner is, is in communications with DHCD for including the affordable units from Prentice Place. And Prentice Place has 10 affordable units. 40 of those units, because their rentals can be counted towards our SHI index number. On the, on the, like I said, on the Fisherville Terrace, 25 units are going to be affordable. And only 25 can be counted toward, toward our SHI number because those are purchase units. And purchase units, if you're putting in 100 purchase units-
Mr. Chairman, where's the sculling?
They don't count. They don't count to it.
Where is the sculling? I mean, we have, we have limited time with Dan. I, you know, I do have some other questions. I, I think Bill's almost making an argument against next week's project, and, and I object to that, quite frankly. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Dan, um, yeah, Peter already asked about the, the two-year wait, so thanks for answering that. Let's, um, let's imagine for a minute, we're talking about Prentice Place, and, and we're in safe harbor, and we're at the end of that project. As you know, we put some conditions on that project, I think for the sewer line and some buffering and a few other things that the, um, that, that the applicant objected to and, and appealed to hack. So my question is, if we get to a similar position while we are in safe harbor, and we don't actually deny because we're, we're in safe harbor, then I assume all, at that point, all of the same rules apply for the appeal. So, so we put conditions on the project, the developer feels that those make the project uneconomic, and he needs to go to hack, appeal it, et cetera. It, it remains exactly the same. The fact that we're in safe harbor has no bearing at that point on the appeal to hack. Is that correct?
But we would just reject it at that point.
That, no, what I said is if we don't reject it.
Right, he said there is no appeal.
I said, if we don't reject it. So they're appealing our conditions. Okay, so we have, this board has never, ever, ever denied a 40B. Okay, what we have done is put conditions on that have twice, that have led to an appeal to hack. They're appealing our conditions. Okay, so my question is, is that situation, I assume all the same rules apply, the fact that we're in safe harbor doesn't matter as far, once it goes to hack. Is, is, is that correct?
No, no, you, you, it's the same rule as denial. So you still, you have the right to, to approve the project with whatever conditions you want. And again, your decision is immune from, from challenge. So let me just go back to the language of the regulation. It says that it, it considers that a denial of the permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs. So it's either or. So you can either deny the permit, or you can approve it with conditions. Either or, your decision is immune from appeal because you're in safe harbor.
Okay, good to know.
Wow.
Good to know.
And, and if I could just briefly, just, I, I want to make sure you folks understand how units are added. I know this is a little off topic, but the way units are added for purposes of safe harbor is different than how they're added for the SHI. So I think Bill Yeomans was kind of theorizing that, you know, gee, we're going to, we're going to get Fisherville. You know, once those, once those units are under building permit, then we've got those units, and we can count those, count those towards safe, towards housing production safe harbor. I don't think you can, because you only count the units once. And they're, they're counted for safe harbor when they are permitted. So I, I don't know for sure, but I know that that is the rule for, that DHCD would say, you've got, you already had your chance to apply for safe harbor when you approved this permit. You can't then, if, if, if those units dropped off the SHI, and now they're going to be put back on because a building permit finally issued 10 years later, you don't have the right to then use those towards a safe harbor. The only exception might be is if in 2010, safe harbor didn't exist. I, I don't, I don't know if it did or not. And that, but that's my understanding of, of the rules on that. So I, I would be careful not to assume that the Fisherville units and Prentice Place units are going to be able to be counted towards, towards another safe harbor in 2024.
One more question. Just one more question added to Bill's. If they can't appeal to HAC, can they appeal to any other court, Superior Court, any other court?
Not, not a, not a plain vanilla appeal, because again, that, that's the whole point of safe harbor. I mean, can they, can they come up with some legal theory that you guys are corrupt? I mean, you violated their First Amendment rights. I mean, I don't, you know, you discriminated against them under some theory of the Federal Housing Act. I mean, I don't know if they could sue you for something, but there, there is no appeal right from the comprehensive permit decision. That, that's as clear as that.
So Dan, in, in terms of the logistics, so we would take a vote whether to invoke safe harbor prior to opening the public hearing or after opening the public hearing?
Probably right after.
Is there any- Um, is there any, should it be a legal letter that's filed? Does it need to be any special language or anything with that notice?
Yeah, I can help, I can help you draft it. I mean, I, I think what you should do is, my advice is to take the vote to invoke it, you know, during the hearing next week. Uh, and I, and I can be there and I can, you know, help you with that. And then after that hearing, you've, you've still got 15 days to send the written notice. So we can draft the written notice. It can be a paragraph. Uh, and then we'll, we'll make sure we got the right terminology in there. And then you just send that to the developer and to DHCD.
Okay.
You're going to be here next week?
So I, I do need to, um, jump off because I've got another Zoom meeting. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna, you know, Dennis is, you're in Dennis's capable hands. Um, and I'm gonna keep my screen on, uh, until I absolutely have to jump. But, um, is there anything else before I?
No, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Extremely helpful. Much appreciated. I, I learned some things tonight that I did not know. Thank you.
Okay. And, and Dennis knows this as well as I do. And he, he also is now up to speed on the Fisherville. Uh, he has, he's seen Jeff Walsh's letter and, and the plans, so.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Thank you.
Good night, Dan.
Are there any other questions from the board on safe harbor?
Brian, do we need, would Dan be the person, because he's our legal counsel, that would actually invoke the safe harbor force? Or could you as the chair or?
No. So we would, after we open the public meeting, we would have a vote. And then based on that vote, Dan would.
Have 15 days to, to.
Draft the legal letter.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Actually, can you? Yes.
I thought I'd ask because I think this might be something the board may want to know. If you're facing multiple applications and you're in a position potentially to open hearings, invoke safe harbor, possibly be in a position to deny. And then developer says, okay, you know, deny it, I'm gonna wait, resubmit. Is there an order upon, you know, that's, let's say we have five projects submitted under 40B? Often, I've been in situations where the board put a stay and you're kind of in the queue. And this situation doesn't sound like there's a queue. But, you know, on March 8th or March 7th, the next 2024, you know, you're gonna have a mad rush of applications. Maybe, maybe the applications come in right before the deadline and you can't hold a hearing in time. You know, like how does that queue? You know, how do you handle that queue? And maybe a good legal question. But it was something that crossed my mind.
Well, that's a helpful question.
I'm, I'm gonna hope we don't get there.
Hopefully, Bill, hopefully Bill's numbers are right and it just continues.
So Dennis, would that, would we just do first in?
Yeah, it would be based on the date the applications were received. And there is a little known provision in the regulations that any board that is subjected to three or more pending comprehensive permit applications that collectively would qualify for a safe harbor, you can actually stay the, uh, public hearings on those.
That's if we're in safe harbor.
Even if you're not in safe harbor and those applications collectively would put you into safe harbor above 10% or the 0.5% annual, then you, so in other words, uh, this hasn't happened to a municipality in some time. But, uh, in the boom times, like 2005, uh, 2006, uh, I, I did work in Mansfield and Mansfield had six 40Bs going at the same time. I chaired my own zoning board in Duxbury, uh, a number of years ago. And at one point we had three active and the fourth, we said, we invoked that stay provision. So it does happen from time to time.
It's good to know. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other comments or any board can close out this, uh, topic? Oh, you want to, yeah.
I apologize. I missed the first part of the meeting. Bruce Spiny, 71 Potter Hill Road. I'm also a member of the, the housing trust. If you haven't made aware, you know, we're in the process of renewing our housing production plan, which will have a lot of, um, information that would be, should be beneficial for you when you're making decisions on projects that you want to see because they have an overall beneficial impact on the community, surrounding community. Because at the end of the day, affordability is not just about a 10% mark that you're trying to get to. It's about facilitating, um, bringing people into the community and allowing them to live in the community. Um, especially people who get priced out of communities like Grafton, um, which is a lot of your teachers, a lot of your firefighters, police, um, individuals as well. Um, so that housing production plan, which probably be done in June, July-ish timeframe, is the same one that exists now, which has the, the current data, which is 2010. Um, it will be updated to the new census data. It will give you a lot of insight into some of the questions you had about what's going to be on our SHI, what the actual number is, what projects are in the pipeline, um, what are some of the goals of the community? This is a document that starts with the trust and it ends up going to the select board. And the select board go through it and then they approve it. It gets sent to DHCD and that's what qualifies us for most of the stuff that we're talking about now. Um, but it also will have a lot of insight into what the actual needs of the community are. Um, so I think it would be beneficial as you're going through this process where you may have multiple LIP applications coming. Um, I, I know you've seen a lot in the select board currently. Um, I guess you can probably assume that there's probably five out there of rather large developments. There's also developments that don't come before you, that come before the special, um, the planning board through overlay districts and things of that nature, 40R. The pending, um, legislation for the transit overlay district, which has density by right, which is up to 15 per acre, which is pretty dense. Um, those are things that you should, can consider. And it's also something that, you know, we'll be focusing on with the housing production plan. So there are a lot of, um, there's a lot of connectivity and communications that should be happening between different boards as we try to position the town to be in safe harbor and take full advantage of what's there. But also to have some identification of actual needs um, for the people who are trying to live in the community. So I just wanted to say that, and I know it's a, um, it's an interesting time. But to take advantage of this fully, um, I think we, all the boards that are, have, um, see the table, so to speak, and communicate with each other well, um, to make sure that all the information's there. Because, you know, what can start with the trust, go to the select board and then come to you can have very different, um, angles and very different ideology. So to make sure that the whole town is, is being represented well, um, we should focus on that. And I'm, I'm glad Mr. McCusker made sure that, you know, everybody knew about this meeting to come because, you know, it's germane to what we're going through and what we're looking at, especially in the next like six months. So.
So the question on the housing production plan, is that a 10-year?
We do it every five.
Five.
Yeah. Um, so, but this one in particular is, um, is beneficial because it'll be the first one where we have a look at the new census data. Um, from the original look at it, it doesn't look like it's going to change substantively. Um, but the benchmarks that we're looking for and the demographic information that you really want when you're basing a decision on what the actual needs of the community are, as opposed to just weighing open space against this, that, or the other thing, it gives you the entirety of the picture. So, and it also looks at some of the stuff that Mr. Adams was talking about is, you know, as we approach and get closer to that full 10%, that doesn't mean the needs of affordable housing are complete. It just means that the town can take a better look at how much the town wants to participate in creating affordable projects. But from an ideological perspective, it's still very, very important for the Commonwealth. It's very, very important for this community um, to make sure we're affordable for the people that we want to employ here and the people we want to see in the community. So anyways, um, I'd love to keep you apprised as we're moving the housing production forward. Um, also, you know, it would behoove of you to reach out to the planning board who has projects on their docket, which aren't 40B in nature, but they are affordable. And most of the time, the way we've set up some of the overlays is most of them typically, you're going to see that 25% number anyways. And the 25%, if it's, especially if it's apartment buildings, then you can count every apartment building towards that number. And when you're this close to safe harbor, you could have a project that's going, um, with the planning board and you're seeing one as well. But you are two very separate boards with two very separate roles. But a quick call to Fiona, the new town planner, and you can kind of coordinate those activities as well. They're also doing the transit overlay stuff too, which is due the end of 2024. So, and next March, of course, we're out of safe harbor, according to the current memo. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Matt Austin, 79 Osborough Road. I would like to encourage ZBA to think about the opportunity for not just safe harbor. There's been a lot of discussion about in and out of safe harbor. Um, I think Dan very clearly articulated the benefits of being in safe harbor. Um, you know, you guys are in the driver's seat. You can help the developers come to a development that is both acceptable to yourselves as well as financially viable for themselves and produce some affordable housing in Grafton. So those are all good things. We're not a million miles away from the 10% threshold. We've got enough going on and what the select board has been presenting to you guys via lips can get us past that 10%. I think the opportunity is not just to take the safe harbor for a year or two. The opportunity is to get comfortably past the 10% and then stay in the driver's seat so that you guys can, can continue in that capacity of shaping these developments to be what you want and what's acceptable to Grafton. I think that's the opportunity. I think there's been a lot of discussion about safe harbor, which is useful. Um, but with what we have in the pipeline at the moment, you guys have the opportunity with the rentals because, you know, at 25% affordable for the rentals, all of them count. So we have hundreds in the pipeline that we could move past that 10%. And I think that is a big opportunity for ZBA to stay permanently in the driver's seat in terms of shaping these developments with no hack involvement. There, there's huge implications to that. So I hope you guys see that opportunity and take advantage of it. The other thing that I would just, uh, bring up is, uh, is Attorney Hill mentioned the, the need to look at open space. If we consider some of the lips that are before, uh, this board in, in the coming months, those are, have higher density. Massachusetts is pushing higher density. If we think about historically, what has taken up most of the open space in Grafton, it's not apartments, it's not commercial, it's residential developments, it's subdivisions with single-family homes. That, that, so if we think about the opportunity that ZBA has, um, if we're thinking about the, um, economic benefits to Grafton, it's, uh, there's an opportunity there with some density. Um, it's just less expensive for the town to run services for something that's more dense. But also it helps Grafton not be subject to the 40B subdivisions that take up so much, um, open space. So there's a, there's a, you know, as we're thinking long-term and strategically about the opportunities that are before us, um, I think if we want to keep the character of Grafton and we want to continue preserving open space as we have been, I think we've been doing a pretty good job with that. Trying to get past 10% and having ZBA be in the driver's seat, having the planning board be in the driver's seat much more fully is a great opportunity. So thanks for your time.
Well, thank you. Any other comments on safe harbor? So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is Fisherville.
Fisherville or Maple?
Do you want to do Fisherville or do you want to do 59 Maple? You can take either of them. They're both at seven. It doesn't matter. 59 Maple might be the quicker of the two.
Okay. All right. Yeah. All right. So we'll, um, do case number 891, 59 Maple Lab.
Dave, can you and your attorney come up and sit at this table, please?
Kay, do you have the petition?
Do I have it?
No.
Okay.
Talking to Kay.
Sorry. Sorry. She's right under you.
Well, I have the hybrid notice, but I, I can, yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
I can read it.
All right.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Uh, hold on one minute. So I'll just read the rules of order. So the way we'll proceed is that the clerk will read the petition and then the petitioner will have the opportunity to present their case. The petitioner will have 15 minutes to present. The petitioner shall present the required information and all comments should be specific. The opposition will also have 15 minutes to speak. These time limits will be extended only with the consent of the board. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition of the petition will then have an opportunity to do so. Letters received in favor of or in opposition to the petition will be read into the meeting record. If you wish to speak, state your name and address for the record. The board may ask questions from time to time. However, all conversations should be directed through the chair. After all evidence is presented, the board will enter into discussion and render a decision. At any time during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by this board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continued to a later date, at which time the petitioner could provide additional information favorable to the petitioner. So at this time, entertain a motion to open the public hearing on case 891.
So moved second.
Motion made and seconded. Do a roll call vote. Mr. McCusker?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Uh, chairman votes yes. The public hearing is open. I will turn it over to the petitioners.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Henry Lane. I'm here with and on behalf of Mr. Mason, who is the owner of the property at 59 Maple Street. I suspect most of you are familiar with the property. It is, um, for a long time been a family-style restaurant. Prior to that, it was more of a bar, I guess. My childhood, it was Natalie's, I guess. Natalie's gone. Janet was running it more recently. But in any event, um, it's a, it's a non-conforming use, uh, on Maple Street. Maple Street's a R2 residential 20 zone, uh, limited to, to residential uses. And obviously as a restaurant, it's, it's a non-conforming. Uh, Mr. Mason owns the property. He's owned it for a number of years now and he's come to the conclusion that he'd like to bring, uh, the property into conformity. And, um, so his plan is essentially to, to demolish, tear down the restaurant and replace it with a duplex dwelling. Uh, it's a little bit unusual, but it generally can say that the lot more than complies with the zoning requirements. I think the lot is about 88,000 square feet. Zoning there is 20,000 square feet. So it's four times the required, uh, area for residential lots in that neighborhood. And he also complies with the frontage requirement. So it's a conforming lot. It's just the use that's in the building that's non-conforming. And obviously primarily this, um, this, this would result in four residential units on that lot. But when you look at it, uh, overall, it will dramatically reduce the amount of activity, uh, the noise, um, and any other impacts on the community. So even though it's a little denser than ordinarily would be allowed in that zone, when you look at the overall density, it's still, you know, more than 20,000 square feet of area for every unit that would be there. building also has a footprint of about 2,400 square feet. So it's essentially replacing one building with another. So the actual impacts on the neighborhood, as I said, should be minimal, other than there'd be significantly less traffic and obviously, whatever other aspects of a restaurant that you would rather not have in your neighborhood will be gone. So that's the basic outline of what we're proposing. I think the plans are in front of you. It's a fairly generic proposal for a duplex. So just so it's clear, we are anticipating retaining the existing duplex that's also on the property and connected to the existing restaurant. So it'll actually be two separate structures on the property for a total of four dwelling units.
Okay.
I should mention, I, you know, every town's bylaws are a little different. Grafton's is a little more sophisticated than many, but they all have a certain amount of ambiguity in them. And our reading of the bylaw in Grafton is that if you have an existing non-conforming building or use, you can change that use with a special permit. And, you know, although there's other provisions with regard to changing uses, non-conforming uses, it appears that it's within the bylaw to allow this kind of a change. There doesn't appear to be a particular limitation of this of this kind of proposed use. So that's where we stand. If the board's interpretation is different, obviously, that's that's something you can deal with. But our reading is that this is permitted by special permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker?
Yeah, I agree that we can change the use per our bylaw. It's a little interesting. You know, what we're really talking about doing is changing from mixed-use residential and the restaurant to strictly residential use, but we're going to have four units of residence here. And I guess I guess what I'm not clear on is, you know, it's one thing, if you were changing that building from a restaurant to a doctor's office, I think that's a change of use that we can all get our heads around. I'm not so sure what we're not sure what the change of use here is. If we're changing it from multi, from mixed use to just residential, then it seems to me that it needs to conform to the residential bylaw, which I'm pretty sure does not allow four units. And Mr. Berger can correct me, I'm sure. And if changing it to four units is considered within the scope of change of use, then the heck, why not change it to 400 units? I mean, you know what I mean?
If you'd like to give us a special permit for that, we'd certainly like to consider that.
But you know what I'm saying? Where do you draw the line? I mean, I mean, something doesn't seem right to me.
It is unusual, but you know, your bylaw does talk about both structures and uses. And you're right, we are changing this to a conforming use in the sense that it's changing from a commercial restaurant use to a to a permitted residential use. And it's a little unusual. And we're looking at it, you know, it's also the structure. We're changing the structure from a restaurant to a residential use. So, yeah, I suspect you're right in the sense that when most people look at those bylaws, this is not particularly the kind of use that, you know, anticipate. But nevertheless, we think it falls within the, you know, within the within the text of the bylaw, even though it's not the traditional one.
Yeah. And, you know, and by the way, if you'd asked for 400, then then the not more detrimental to the neighborhood component of Section 6 would kick in. And I think we would have no problem finding that that would be detrimental. So but through you, Mr. Chair, I see that Mr. Berger had a hand. I would like to get his opinion at this point.
Two houses on one lot.
So, Mr. Chair, if you read my zoning determination?
I did.
They are going from a mixed use. My mic is working. Yep. They're going from a mixed use to a residential multifamily. So it's not and residential multifamily is not allowed in an R20 use. But I do agree with Attorney Hill. I think that's who's there. No, I think that's.
Attorney Lane.
Attorney Lane. I'm sorry. Under 3435, you can change the use as long as there's a finding. And it's up to the board for to find that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So the new use is residential multifamily?
It's not a permitted. It needs it needs your relief.
So the new use is residential multifamily? That's a use?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Now, these are just going to be rented?
That's.
Never sold?
I don't know about never. I don't know if I have.
Well, that's what bothered me because we had one in North Grafton, and you were on it, Bill, probably. Two houses on one lot. We gave them a variance to have. We probably gave them a frontage variance or whatever to cut the lot in half. And that's what I see happening here. If these were hooked together, I'd feel better about it. But we got two houses on one lot.
You can.
And it can be split later.
Well, you can condition a special permit that.
Yeah, but then somebody will come in front of us and want us to undo the conditions. So we're creating more work for ourselves.
I think you can condition it in a way that, yeah, sure, we can never predict the future. But I think you could control that. It's really the concern that we could not subdivide the lot, which would require us either to sell it as a unit or to conduit, you know, either way. But I agree. I would not want to see this lot subdivided into two separate lots. That would definitely be a, you know, abuse of the of the bylaw and a special permit. And that's not what we're proposing.
Right. But I think to Mr. Adams' point, that's not what you're proposing, not what you intend, but.
We've done the opposite. We uncreated one of these, but.
Could this be configured in a way to make it one structure, but four units?
I think theoretically, it's possible. But then you get into a whole bunch of code issues like fire suppression and things like that, which would be hard to do to retrofit the old building. I suppose nothing's impossible, but it would be difficult.
This couldn't be divided because the frontage.
Well, they come and ask for a variance.
Oh, that's true.
Mr. Chair?
Wouldn't that be a self-created hardship?
Absolutely.
Oh, that's.
That doesn't stop people from coming and asking for a variance.
But it gives you the opportunity to deny it.
You gotta have some faith in your successors that they know the right thing.
Bob has his hand up.
But it would give us an excuse to not hear it a second time. So that that helped me right there.
Mr. Berger?
The only comment I have is if you let them have a separate unit, which, you know, you could, then they could go in front of the planning board and ask for an 81L, which is to separate the lot if there's two principal structures on the same lot. So I don't think that would go back in front of the planning, the zoning board, but it may have to go in front of the zoning board for a variance for if they don't meet their setbacks.
Yeah, well, they certainly wouldn't meet frontage, right? So they'd have to.
No, they wouldn't because under 81L, it's kind of in our bylaw. Also, if you have two principal structures on a lot, the planning board can subdivide that lot as best as they can.
I don't disagree with with Mr. Berger, but typically, 81L is interpreted to mean it has to predate zoning, that the lots have to have two buildings before zoning. 81L, you know, doesn't save you after zoning is adopted. So, you know, I've dealt with that a little bit. And most towns interpret 81L that way and require variances if you want to divide the lot if you built a house or a building after zoning was adopted.
That could be true. I'm not an attorney.
But you often play one on television, right?
I do. I do. On Fridays.
Would you would you prefer that they split it now?
No, I don't have a problem with it as long as we put in the condition someplace that they are maybe creating a future hardship or whatever. What would you call it, Bill?
Actually, Dave.
Self-created hardship.
Yeah, a self-created hardship.
He actually created one himself one time. We probably use that term on him.
I mean, they have created a self-created hardship, so it shouldn't ever be divided. And it shall continue to always be landlord-owned or something like that, rental units.
That you cannot do.
We can't do that?
No. You can't control the ownership aspect. You can control the division of the land, but you can't contribute to form of ownership.
But for use?
Yeah, but I think what he's saying is, and I think we can, is they have to be rental units.
Rental.
Can't be can't be subdivided.
A condo.
I don't think you can prohibit condom.
Because then there'd be lot lines.
No, those aren't lot lines. All the real estate stays in common ownership as a single lot. The interiors.
I could live with that.
My recollection is that you cannot prohibit somebody from doing, you know, making condominiums out of multifamilies. I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure.
I think I think you're right.
But you can't just turn apartments into condominiums without going in front of a board, can you?
Absolutely. We do it every week. There's a few things that zoning boards can't control in ownership. The form of ownership is one of them.
So, you know, my opinion is this. We're talking about putting four residential units on a lot in the R20 zone. And that just doesn't feel right. Now, I think that this is going to overall be an improvement, you know, for that lot. I mean, you know, it was a nice restaurant and all that, but it's not the greatest-looking building. And I can imagine that it would probably be a better-looking, you know, set of buildings. But it just something just it just doesn't feel right, the idea of putting four units on a lot in the, you know, in this zoning district. And like I said, I mean, you know, where would you draw the line? You know, if somebody else comes in, they want six or eight. I mean, I, you know, I don't know what point it does become detrimental to the zoning district.
I think in fairness, I mean, this is a very unique situation because we're eliminating a 2,400-square-foot commercial building and replacing it with a 2,400-square-foot residential building. So this is this isn't, we're not asking for more than's there. We're just substituting what's there, square footage for square footage. And it's not it's not the kind of thing that's likely to come up a lot. I suspect there's not a lot of people tearing down commercial buildings, you know, in these kinds of circumstances. So I, you know, I think as Building Inspector indicated, the real question is, is this detrimental to the neighborhood or is it not? And I think, you know, you acknowledge it. Basically, it's an improvement. So it's a little unusual, but I think I think, you know, it is an improvement. There's less traffic, less noise, and it's a permitted use. It's residential. You know, and as I indicated, the overall density is, you know, complies. We've got 80,000 square feet in, you know, so it's arranged a little different in terms of how the density is organized. But we do meet, you know, the area requirements per unit. So it's not, we're not certainly not pushing the envelope here. You know, we're trying to do something that makes sense.
So what about saleability later, that you need to find someone to buy two structures on one lot or units?
We've never seen it to be a problem. We do it all the time. If you're in the landlord business, whether it's on one lot or two lots, doesn't really matter. You know, in fact, it may be more saleable because you only get one tax bill instead of two, you know.
You know, Janet's was pretty calm, but if he put another Natalie in there, and that's before Dave's time, that place was pretty loud for the neighborhood. So I don't know if we want that either.
When you were there, Peter?
No, no.
I remember it, but I wasn't old enough to enter that premise.
Like the Avalon Club with the convenience stores and Main Street.
You know, let's be realistic. I mean, you know, he could. Let's put a nightclub in there, right? I mean.
Right.
So.
Mr. Yeoman?
As I recall, in recent years, we've spent a number of different hearings where we're dealing with two houses on one lot that were created long before the zoning bylaws went in place.
Yeah.
And there, you know, there are others existing around town. If you look carefully, if you go into the tax records, you can see them. I'm not inclined to think that while this may be an improvement, getting rid of the getting rid of the restaurant building. And I have to admit, I've been by it a number of times. I've I don't recall ever being in it. But we're creating two lots, two houses on one lot that we've spent many different hearings subdividing those lots that were created as grandma and grandpa houses, you know, put one out back. And, you know, I just don't see the and don't see the benefit of having the four like this. And you mentioned that connecting them, but in connecting them, then you have to adhere to the sprinkler bylaws, I think, in town, which becomes expensive. But, you know, I'm not inclined to think that granting this variance is going to be.
Special permit.
You know, excuse me, special permit, yeah. So.
It's going to be what?
I don't think it's going to be an improvement. I think it should remain one building. And if you want to put up, you know, another, if you want to put up a bigger complex, then have it be in one building and maybe take both of them down.
Kay?
Again, I've not visited.
Any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Oh, hold on one second.
Oh, okay.
No.
I'm not voting, but I do have a I do question what can, Mr. Berger, can you explain, are we allowed to have two structures on one lot?
The only the only zoning district we have that lets you do that is residential multifamily, which is the condominium complexes that you see all around town. This is an R20 zone. In an R20 zone, it's one principal structure, one family or with a special permit through the planning board, a two-family. And correct me if I'm wrong, Katrina, what zone is this in?
R20. R20.
That's what I thought. Okay. So they could they could have a two-family, one-two-family with a special permit through the planning board.
And so this use is not allowed in this zoning district?
The two-family use is allowed, but the two-family was there in, I think, 1920, and the restaurant came into effect in 1930. That made it a mixed use, which is not allowed in that zone. And my determination is that's why it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Sorry, but we're not doing a two-family. We're going to do two-two families.
You're going to do, he wants to put a wants to put another two-unit building on. So that would, in my mind, make this a residential multifamily complex.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mason, did you want to?
Yeah, I just, my opinion was that it would look a lot nicer to have two almost distinct buildings. It would look more residential. There's a duplex there now, hooked to a restaurant. To add onto that existing two-family and build another two-family, brand-new hook to an old house, to me, just wouldn't look very residential. At that point, I mean, are you asking me to tear it down and go for six units? If I'm going to go multifamily, I would think do sprinkler and everything else. I was trying to just build a separate building, make it look more residential to try and fit in the area.
I don't think anyone's a. I don't think anyone's, you know, pushed back on the plan, on, you know, the concept. I think our issue is the two-family structures on one lot. You know, I don't think the look of it or, you know, the plan is...
Well, right now, you have a two-family with a restaurant hooked to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that's why I'm looking to just tear that down and build a separate building.
But I, it seems to me like we're creating a future problem. Or you're creating your own hardship. But it's a, something that would have to come before this board later to be resolved.
I think we just write that in the record as a finding and...
What's that?
That it's a self-imposed hardship if they ever want to subdivide it later. A self-created, whatever you call it.
I don't know that we need to have it documented. I mean, I think that's just going to be a fact.
Well, just remind the next board of it, that's all. Myself, I don't have a problem with it. I'd rather see, the restaurant isn't, how long has it been since it's been, anybody's been in there?
January.
They ran it right through the end of the year.
Yeah, it shut down January first.
I don't want to see another Klondike.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think this will be an improvement. Just kind of, you know, it just bothers me a bit that, you know, we're talking about putting, you know, four units on a lot in our 20s zone, two buildings. I mean, but, I mean, you know, I think there's much worse things that could be on here. You know, Attorney Lane, you said we really have any control over ownership. We can't say something like the four units need to remain in common ownership?
I don't, I don't believe you can do that. I don't believe, you know, we went through this some years ago with the whole question of converting apartment buildings into condominiums. And I know that a number of towns tried to, you know, prohibit that. And as I recall, the outcome of that was that the town cannot control the form of ownership. They can control all the physical features, things like prohibiting further subdivision of the lot, those kinds of things. But I don't think that they can technically prohibit condominium, you know, creating a condominium because that doesn't change anything physically. It doesn't divide the land ownership. It doesn't reduce the size of the lot. All it does is, you know, convert, it's essentially, you know, a permanent lease of the interiors.
Yeah, so you just, you just really, you just stated what we can say is that, you know, we can condition a special permit on that the lot is not subdivided.
Right, that you can do.
And so that's really the reminder, right? That'd be the way to remind them is the lot can't, we'll condition upon the lot not being subdivided in the future. Not carving anything off the back for any reason or any other reason. Just cannot be subdivided in the future. I'm okay with it. I don't feel 100% good about it, but I think it's better for the neighborhood. I think it's better than what's there. I'm sure Mr. Mason will make it look nice. There'll be, you know, two more rental units, you know, for the town, which we need.
What if he was proposing to split it into two lots and no other changes? Where we would have, knowing we would have to grant a variance based on frontage and side setback?
Like, I think this board really looks, historically, we've not allowed that. We've had other folks come in with lots with inadequate frontage or other things like that that they wanted to subdivide, and we've said no.
Yeah, I think that's the reason we're not here asking for a variance because the standards for getting a variance is pretty tough. And frankly, we can't meet them. We can meet the requirements for a special permit. We cannot meet the requirements for a variance, so. And that's not going to change. So, you know, the chance of anybody coming in with that and getting a variance is very unlikely. And if you make, put a restriction in the special permit, that makes it even less likely. So I think that's really almost a non-issue at this point.
Public comment?
Any other comment from the board? Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering. I'm here for other business, but listening to the proceedings tonight, I understand Mr. McCusker's concern about the density, more than two dwelling units on the lot. The way I see it is that if somebody were to come forward with an application for two dwelling units on a lot, either they'd be applying for a building permit straight out or they'd be before the planning board for some kind of permit on the 48. Basically, that doesn't require variance or a special permit. But because of the specific nature of this property and its past use, in Mr. Berger's interpretation, which I agree with, that he helped me clear my mind on residential, single-family, two-family versus residential multifamily. I'm very familiar with the residential multifamily here in town. So comparing the residential multifamily to another commercial use, if you want to call them both commercial, again, because of the density, that doesn't allow them to go apply for a building permit. It doesn't allow them to go to the planning board. It brings it back here to this board to deliberate like it's doing. And that's the difference, as I see it.
Okay, is there any, so there's no public comment?
Somebody has a comment. Hold on, Deborah Coe, hold on.
Hi, Deb Coney, 57 Maple Ave. I'm right next door. I actually love the idea of the two-family, and he wants to do. I, as much as the Burgers were fantastic at Janitz, I'm pretty happy that there'll be a change right now. So I think it would look much better. Just an opinion, so. Better for the neighborhood. I think that everybody would agree.
Yeah, and I think, I think everyone agrees with that, that, you know, it's an improvement. I don't think there's any pushback from that standpoint. So there's no further public comment?
I give motion to close the hearing. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Rule call vote. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that the Grafton Board of Appeals grant a special permit to David Mason, trustee of Hilltop Realty Trust, 459 Maple Avenue, to allow, where do I go? To allow a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant to be replaced by a duplex residential structure per, do we have like an Exhibit A?
Right here. I printed an extra one.
All right, we'll make that a per Exhibit A.
Dave, I'll just need you to have to sign this before you leave tonight.
So I'll just say that one more time.
Is that the plan?
Yep.
So again, it's the Grafton Board of Appeals. Grant a special permit to David Mason, trustee of Hilltop Realty Trust, 59 Maple Avenue, Grafton, to allow a, this is where it gets dicey, to allow a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant to be replaced by a duplex structure per Exhibit A. Yeah.
In that condition?
Oh. Subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the property.
Or the lot?
Yeah, the lot, thank you.
Cannot be subdivided.
Lot cannot be subdivided. Second.
Motion made, seconded. Do a roll call vote.
Just quickly go through findings, just because, make sure we're on the same page here. So I have a finding F1. The structure and uses began in the 1930s. Finding two is a parcel located in our 20 zoning district. Finding three, the current use is a mixed use, parentheses, residential, comma, restaurant, closed paren. Finding F4, mixed use is not allowed in the R-20 district. And therefore, based on findings F1 through F4, the current structure is a pre-existing non-conforming, no, the current use is a pre-existing non-conforming use. And then we have a finding F5. The current use is residential, restaurant, residence and restaurant. Finding six, the proposed use is a multifamily. So this one's finding seven, the neighborhood consists primarily residential uses. And I've added in here, finding eight, the lot size is 80,000 square feet, adequate for four residential units in this district. So then, based on findings five through eight, the proposed addition, the proposed change of use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And then the last thing is that would be a finding nine, the lot is not in the water protection supply, water supply protection overlay district.
Are you referencing the sheet?
Yep.
So those are the findings. I think it's fairly straightforward. Good luck reading these.
I've gotten good at it over the years.
Roll call vote. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The special permit is granted. Katrina, well...
So you know how it works. I have 14 days to type up the decision and get them in to sign it, file it with the town clerk. After that, you'll receive a copy. If that's filed, you have 20. There's a 21-day period. On that 21st day, you can come in and pick up the certificate.
Two more rentals up there with someone, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members.
We should have put on...
Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is Fisherville.
Mr. Chair, I don't think you need me for this meeting.
Good night, Bob.
Thank you.
Hang on a second.
Oh, okay. I guess you need me for this meeting.
All right, I guess not, Bob. I guess not.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
It may be a while.
It's all right.
If we need you, can I text you and come back?
Why do we do that?
No, I'll just shut my camera off and I'll do some paperwork here.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody need a full-size copy to look on here?
I can look at it. I will take one with me. And I'll look on Peter and be guided.
You want me to give you a finger? Is that what you're saying? Hold the mic on.
Those are the newer ones.
This is the new.
Yeah, that's the new, way back it was supposed to go down. This is 30-inch. Then it goes to 36. You can tell by down here. How do you feel about this?
All right, Mr. Huddle?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Chris Tragostino, counsel for Fisherville Terrace LLC, the applicant before the board this evening. I'm here this evening with the lead civil designer on the project, Steve O'Connell, and the applicant's principal, Munir Ahmed. If the board recalls, the application before the board is for a notice of project change regarding changes to the drainage infrastructure that was proposed within Main Street at the bottom of the hill where this project's being built. When we last met, we were waiting on the engineers to have an opportunity to convene and discuss the details of the proposed modification and then whether or not the revised plan will support the project as proposed. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Steve O'Connell, who will give the board a description of what he's gone through over the past several months in working with Graves Engineering to review the changes and ensure that the revised plan is adequate to support drainage for the project.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening. Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. I'd like to just start off by saying, you know, thanking you for your patience. Personally, been through a lot, and it's been the main contributor to the delay. You know, Munir has been, you know, gracious enough to stick with me and has required your patience and I, and his patience. So I sincerely appreciate that. We've got a good working relationship on a number of projects, and I know you feel the same way. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank you. Which brings us to, you know, where we are. Wish we were here sooner, but this is where we are. As, as you know, this project, a critical component of this project, going back to the original permitting of the comprehensive permit for this project, which would be for my time, but I have a lot of history just from discussions and knowledge of the project evolution, was, was the potential impacts on Main Street that had happened, you know, without this project being constructed. So more specifically, the drainage system, the drainage collection system in Main Street, the nearby, you know, topographic conditions, potential floodings in Main Street, floodings of properties along Main Street. So I know this was a critical component of the project, and I'm happy to report that, you know, I think we're there. I believe we're there. It's nice, in some ways, that the DOT project is also happening in conjunction because I think there are improvements as part of that project that help the overall situation as well. I actually do sincerely believe that this project helps the overall situation in conjunction with the DOT project. You know, and that being said, the results of engineering calculations and plans and discussions have resulted in what's been submitted and what's in front of you. And I'll briefly explain how we got there. So this plan in front of you here shows Main Street, which generally runs east-west. And here is the entrance, boulevard entrance of the Fisherville Terrace project. So the lines, the dark lines shown are the proposed drainage infrastructure, the drainage piping. Beginning here at what we call the bypass structure, that is the flow that comes in Main Street, also through a culvert off Main Street. And what this does is it allows flow, stormwater flows to come down this little stream, and it collects into this kind of what we call a swamp area. It's a wetland. It's a low-depressed area that does have an outlet, which we'll get to. But then, the bypass structure, what that does is when flows in that structure and that manhole exceed a cer, cause the elevation to exceed a certain height, it allows the flows, which haven't previously happened or been allowed to happen, allows the flows to come down Main Street in the pipe. And what that does is that elevates the amount of flow that would go to the rear of these houses. Again, a situation that had not been allowed to happen until the installation of this bypass structure. The bypass structure is installed. It was installed as part of the DOT project. They put it on their plans because it was on the project plans. The only thing that needs to happen in that structure, which the applicant will do, is build the wear wall inside. The structure is there. The wear wall needs to be constructed to the elevation shown on the plans, and that will be done as part of this work. So then, continuing easterly down Main Street, we have existing, there's an 18-inch pipe that DOT installed. That will be replaced with a 24-inch pipe, as supported by the calculations, to the intersection with the manhole and the pipe coming from the Fisherville Terrace project. The pipe from the Fisherville project is a 24-inch, converges with the manhole in front of the project, and the 24-inch coming easterly here. From this point, easterly, it's a 30-inch pipe at 1.1%, continues all the way easterly along Main Street. It's picking up catch basins that are recently installed by the DOT project. All that flow contributing into the system still calls for a 30-inch pipe at 1.1% until we get to this manhole here. And what happens in this manhole is we turn 90 degrees towards Elmwood Street. But as part of that redirection, there are two catch basins in Main Street here. Those catch basins get a lot of flow. The reason they get a lot of flow is there's a lot of overland flow through all these properties that make it to these two catch basins, particularly this catch basin on the south side of Main Street.
What's the number of that one?
The number of that manhole is... The number of that manhole is, well, it's catch basin eighty-five, but the manhole is three fifty-one.
Okay.
And, uh, because of the flow that comes into those catch basins, which are just a part of Main Street and were installed from the DOT project, this pipe mathematically, uh, engineering-wise, uh, needs to change from a thirty to a thirty-six. So at this juncture here, and the pipe goes this way, it's a thirty-six, and it's a thirty-six the rest of the way, which, which we'll quickly get to. The other component, uh, about the drainage system is that, as I mentioned before, the swamp, the low area, which we call the swamp behind these houses on Main Street, in conjunction with a little, with a small depressed area in the Weeks property, is allowed to discharge through an eighteen-inch pipe with some funny configurations. Uh, nonetheless, uh, water still discharged out of this swampy area and into the, uh, from the Depression and Weeks property through this eighteen-inch pipe. Elmwood Street's gonna be re-oriented from DOT, you can see the construction kind of underway. So the, this intersection will be eliminated, Elmwood Street is gonna turn like this. They're going to, they've, they've already installed this manhole, they're gonna turn this catch basin into a manhole, which they've, I believe mostly done. So this thirty-six-inch pipe that will be installed by the applicant is gonna be replacing the eighteen-inch. This eighteen-inch all the way will be replaced by the thirties, the thirty, and then here we go to the thirty-six. It's also gonna be a collection point in intersection of, of drain piping in this manhole. And again, uh, thirty-six-inch pipe can support that flow. Thirty-six-inch pipe continues across what I would call the old Elmwood Street, even though you can drive it today. Drive until, until this is, construction's complete. Uh, there's a small parking lot here that comes off Elmwood Street and Sunnyside Terrace. The drain pipe continues, it picks up the catch basins and the drain from the parking lot, continues across Sunnyside Terrace, picks up, uh, drain, uh, flow from a catch basin in Sunnyside Terrace, it picks up flow from a catch basin to the front of the fire station. As you can see the configuration runs like catch basin to a manhole, to a catch basin, to a manhole and. The thirty-six-inch pipe continues across the front of the fire station, into the lawn, the lawn in front of the elementary school. Uh, there's an existing catch basin there that will remain a catch basin, but the, the piping will come into it and then come out of it until it reaches the terminal manhole, uh, in the lawn of the school. From that point, there is a large, uh, pipe that exits that manhole, runs easterly towards, I guess you'd call it the river, the railroad over there too, I believe. So, um, we prepared calculations. One of the biggest challenges with the preparation of these calculations, which we may have, uh, explained a little bit at a prior meeting was what happens with the water in the Fisherville Terrace Project? So, you know, there's two different methodologies that are used for drainage calculations that I, I, I explained in my cover letter. Uh, there's something called TR-55, which is, uh, from the USDA. It's widely accepted, uh, you know, hydrology, uh, you know, methodology, used generally for large, smaller watersheds, which may sound large, but up to two thousand acres. And they're used to, um, to calculate runoff, um, from factors like vegetative cover, slope, and then obviously we have, you know, rainfall that, um, is, is aggregated over time, uh, but also across those surfaces. And in, in many cases are placed into an impoundment. And that impoundment known as a deten- most times as a detention basin, allows water to collect and fill up before it's released. And that delay that occurs during, in the impoundment, while other water is falling out of the sky, landing on pavement or other surfaces and being collected and running through pipes, that slight delay is very critical in the design of stormwater systems. So the reason why we went through this exercise is to, to account for that delay. So the trans, uh, the translation that had to happen from the TR-55 method to, you know, for designing hydro- large hydrology systems and, and include impoundments, and then the rational method, which is the acceptable method for designing, you know, hydraulic, hydraulic pipe design, that translation, you know, had to happen, worked closely with Jeff. Jeff, Jeff was a great, great asset to be able to, to work with, um, on this situation. So we, uh, we agreed on, on, on the methodology that, that, you know, needed to take place. So it's very important that we understand this large impoundment on the Fisherville Terrace Project, you know, delays the water while it's raining in Main Street. The water lands in Main Street, it lands on all of the land that contributes to Main Street, gets into the Main Street system, you know, much sooner than the water is being collected into the, in the impoundments on the Fisherville Terrace Project. Then they're released from the impoundments, they run down these pipes in the Fisherville Terrace roadway, and they intersect with the Main Street drainage system. At that point in, in the time of the storm, the water more proximate to the Main Street system is in the pipes and running down the pipes. So, you know, that's happening first, and then the delay, the water from the Fisherville Project can come in and come down the pipes. Now that's, that's one set of calculations we did, we did two set of cap- sets of calculations. One to reflect that delay that occurs, and then one set of calculations that doesn't reflect that delay. And that's a very conservative approach, but not unrealistic because there may be a time period when that's, that may happen before the stormwater infrastructure is complete, fully functional, uh, et cetera. But we also wanted you to be comfortable, um, that with our conservative approach, the system was still properly sized.
Or that would be the case if the catch basin was full, right?
Sure, if there were problems in the system, um, they were, you know, say the impoundment had some reason to be bypassed, we had back-to-back hundred-year storms. I mean, there were, there are, there are some factors that could contribute to that, but, you know, it's an important exercise to, you know, to consider. Engineers are mostly conservative, you know, some structural engineers are known to be even more, more conservative than, than other engineers, but, um, it, it's always good to look at, uh, you know, different scenarios. So we wanted to look at both, Jeff was in agreement with that. Um, we wanted you to be aware that we looked at that scenario and, and both sets of calculations are provided. Even in, um, the very, you know, the unconservative, conservative approach, you know, the, the thirty-inch pipe leading to a thirty-six, uh, is still, still the pipe of choice, but, um, with the conservative approach, it's obviously, um, you know, the right choice, design-wise. So, you know, one of the biggest, I would say one of the biggest, there, there's a couple of changes. One is, on the original plans, it was a thirty-six-inch pipe the whole way. Um, what I know to be, to be true is that that was, hey, let's throw a thirty-six-inch pipe on there, it's gonna be big enough, you know, we'll do the engineering later. Um, I've never seen engineering calculations for the sizing of that pipe, I've, I had the original file, been through it. Calculations have been done now, uh, reviewed by Jeff. So the thirty-inch pipe at the slope provided ultimately turns to a thirty-six, you know, was, was one part of the change, as opposed to thirty-six the whole way. The other part of the change is, is the routing of the pipe. And I think at the last meeting we asked, you know, had, had the DPW director opined on that situation? He has done, uh, done so. Uh, so here specifically is where this pipe turns towards Elmwood, ultimately crossing Sunnyside Terrace and getting into the existing manhole that was always gonna get in. And the main reason for that change was, we were cautioned by DPW director that from about this section in Main Street, heading easterly, there's a large layer of concrete under the asphalt surface. Uh, it's the, it's the exact same reason why the DOT project, uh, routed their drainage essentially this way. They didn't have to upgrade the pipe, so they didn't go across the fire station parking lot, but their eighteen-inch pipe and the replacement, you know, and they didn't go down Main Street, was predominantly because of that, I guess that section used to be concrete, uh, before my time. Henry Lane might remember, but he left.
I was told the, it's the concrete's from the trolleys that used to be in South Graff.
That's correct, yep. You're right, that, that.
Somebody from town told me that.
That rings a bell.
Just telling you what I was told.
We have a history buffle.
Not me, yeah, no, I wasn't there.
She was at Janet's Hilltop.
Yeah, that's it.
But, um, so that, those, those are the two, uh, you know, kind of obvious and only changes. But, you know, I wanted to summarize that for you. Jeff may care to add, um, to the discussion, but, uh, we're in receipt of his letter. My understanding, you know, of the letter is, uh, he concurs with, uh, with the engineering that supports the proposal, um, and, uh, I guess my hope is that, uh, you're in support of it as well. I know there are a few issues here, uh, with regards to the season's assistance, you know, perhaps might be more than, I know this was the big issue. Maybe I'll be surrounding this issue, but, uh, I think this is the one that we've all kind of been waiting, you know, to see and discuss.
Jeff, do you?
Sure. For the record, I'm Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering. I'm very comfortable with the design, I'm comfortable with the pipe sizing. It was, please do understand that, um, as, as, uh, Steve was making his presentation and he spoke of the impoundment, the stormwater basin at the top of the hill. That captures a lot of runoff from the top of the hill. But keep in mind the boulevard entrance that we're looking at here, Steve, if you could highlight the boulevard entrance. That, the stormwater collected in the drainage system along that boulevard entrance ties directly into Main Street without the benefit of the impoundment of the stormwater basin at the top of the hill. These calculations do account for that. It's a pretty good-sized amount of pavement area, and, and there's also a head wall, thank you, that captures some overland flow, um, coming into the drainage system. So again, they took the master OT calculations that only, only addressed Main Street, and they built upon that to include the, um, the boulevard entrance as well as the flows coming from the, um, uh, the bypass structure. And then the challenge was to take their TR-55 hydrologic information, which you can calculate both volumes and, and rates of runoff for any time period. And we had to work those into the rational method pipe sizing calculations, which calculate one number and one number only, peak rate of flow. So that's the apples and the oranges, one set of calculations gives you only peak rate of flow, cannot address impoundment, those are the rational method calculations. The other ones have a lot more information with them. We create what's called these hydrographs, which you plot time versus rate of runoff, and if you integrate the area under the curve, that's your volume. I'm not trying to get too technical, but the beauty of it is if you, if one is comfortable with how the calculations work, you can work between one and the other. It's just laborious and it's not done too often. That said, uh, the bypass structure is critical, that is built. Uh, the interior wall, the wear wall, if you will, it's a wall that comes up so high that keeps the water flowing in the culvert across Main Street from one side to the other. And it's only when there's higher flows and the water level within the pipe gets to a certain height, excess water, water will still keep going the way it did, but the excess water that used to build up and the volume of water that used to flood those, those, uh, backyards can now be brought into the Main Street drainage system, conveyed past the quote-unquote swamp, and brought back to where the water would eventually go had it gone through the swamp, for lack of a better term. That's as far as I wanted to go with my discussion, but I'd be glad to answer any questions the board has.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, a few things, um, first of all, you know, we just wanted to be clear, you, you, you kind of alluded to it, the, the basin at the top of the hill and slow and runoff, that all has to do with water on top of the hill, stuff coming off the houses, driveways, the road, everything up there. And we saw this past summer where water coming down the boulevard, coming down the hill off the project has really done a lot of damage flooding Main Street. So, you know, let's, I wanna make sure we're clear on that, that, you know, there is a flooding problem, there is, you know, a lot of water coming off the hill there. As I understand it, originally proposed was a thirty-six-inch pipe. For the first time, I'm hearing that there was no engineering associated with that thirty-six-inch sizing. Are you aware, was there, back in the day?
There was, I have, I didn't bring those calculations with me. There was some information put together by Westcott Engineering, Westcott Services, whatever they call themselves. It was very late in the game on the permitting, and I think there was not a round of peer review. That was basically when, um, the investigation for where this Main Street drainage system would connect. About that time I was less involved with it, I never went out and was involved with the DPE, DPW and the research between the applicant at that time and DPW. But I did receive, and I still have in my possession, a set of calculations. The pipe, I, I did not refresh myself with them, but I certainly do recall that it at least addressed the flow from, um, this Fisherville Terrace subdivision, but it never brought in all the other flows from catch basins along Main Street. What it did is made some allocation that, yes, there will be some flow to be engineered at a later date. And I certainly expected a round of supporting data to present either the thirty-six, um, is gonna work or alternatively it was found that, once all this engineering got done, that something other than the thirty-six-inch may work.
Okay, so, um, it's, it's not like the thirty-six was just, uh, arbitrary?
No, it wasn't pulled out of the sky, there was supporting information.
Okay, so, so then the next question becomes, um, so, so somebody put some thought into it, came up and said thirty-six inches needed, now we're going to thirty, uh, for, for a good chunk of this. And I, I know I've mentioned this before, but you sort of understands, the difference between thirty and thirty-six is not just the six inches or one-six the size. Uh, when you talk about the area of a pipe, it's, you know, about a thirty percent reduction. So it's substantial, okay? Going from thirty-six down to thirty is a thirty percent reduction in size. So that's concerning to me, that at one point somebody did some engineering and, and arrived at one number, and now we're at a number that's thirty percent less. So the first question I have for you, Jeff, is how close are we? You know, you, you say it works, okay. How close?
Sure. On the conservative side, and that would be exhibit number two A, when we get down to, um, between DMH number eighty-three and three fifty-one, Steve, could you point those out on the, on the plane, that's the last run of thirty-inch? That's at ninety, ninety-two percent of available capacity.
Okay.
And then it bumps up to thirty-six-inch, and it's down to like, oh, about, and there was some more inflows into it, there's about eighty-five percent of capacity, eighty-five to ninety percent of capacity till we get down to the, the last run between CB two seventy-eight and DMH two eighty-one, which is the connection point. And that's running at, at the peak flow, that's running at ninety-four percent of capacity.
Okay, but we were talking about the thirty-inch pipe, at points we're at ninety percent. So not, not a whole lot of margin for error.
And that's on the one situation, on the other situation, this is the more intense rainfall where water's hitting the pavement on Fisherville Terrace Boulevard on Main Street. The flow from the detention basin is not that much. These numbers I gave you and the percentages they use in their calculations, peak rate coming out of the detention basin, which isn't gonna occur, because that, that occurs later. And they use a slightly greater intensity along just the boulevard portion. If we were to look at when the peak rate comes out of the detention basin and passes through the system, and the rainfall coming to all the other catch basins along the route, it's running at fifty-five percent capacity compared to the ninety-four percent capacity. the 94% capacity in the 36 inch.
Yep.
And if we go back upstream to the area around DMH 359 to DMH 83, which Steve, if you could take a minute and point that out, it's up near Fisherville Terrace.
Yep.
It is the 30 inch pipe.
Yep.
Right up near the head end there, that's running at 61% of available capacity.
Okay. All right. Um, so I, I, if, if I'm going to vote to, in, in favor of this, to, to approve this project change, I think one of the requirements, one of the conditions I'm going to want and, Attorney Murphy, that you, you may want to pay attention a little bit here because, uh, we're going to need you or Dan Hill to be creating these conditions appropriately. But, um, right now, you know, there is a condition I seven that talks about a, um, bond, um, to cover the, you know, the infrastructure, stormwater, et cetera. I'm going to want that bond to be sized sufficiently such that if the 30 inch pipe doesn't work, it can be replaced with a 36 inch pipe. And I did ask Jeff to prepare some estimates of what that would take. But, um, I'm going to want, um, I seven to be updated to, to include not only the standard, um, you know, roads and, and site infrastructure, but also, you know, offsite if we need to replace that, um, 30 inch with a 36, that there's sufficient bond to cover that. Um, that, that's, that's one of the things that I'm going to want. Um, the, the other thing is, um, there's, there's a couple of the changes that are necessary there. Um, right now, um, it says condition I seven talks about a bond that would stay in place for a period of two years following the issuance of the 54th occupancy permit. That actually should have been updated when we did the NPC to bump it to 100 units. Um, that 54 is 75% of the original number. That should have been bumped up to 75. I want to change, um, condition I seven to, to basically so that, um, the bond stays in place for a period of two years after the issuance of the 100th occupancy permit. So in other words, after completion of everything, we want the bond to stay in two places, two years to, to cover.
That the same bond, that, that the same bond we're talking about, the Main Street bond?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the whole, the whole stormwater infrastructure bond.
Yeah. On-site and off-site combined?
Yep. Yep. Exactly.
Want to understand?
Yep. So, um, those are going to be my two wants i- if I'm going to vote, you know, in favor of this change. Um, the, the other thing is, I did ask at the last hearing, why we're doing this? So why, why don't we just put the 36 inch pipe in?
Well, one of the main, main reasons is, like, Jeff alluded to that there was, there were calculations that went into the 36 inch pipe. But if, if you listen to the details of what he said, there were a lot of components that weren't taken into account, that 36 inch pipe. And my understanding is that the Westcott Services at the time was overly conservative, knowing that there were components that hadn't been accounted for, like the Main Street drainage system. And he put it, and it was safe to put a 36. I never saw, and, and I believe there were some hy- hydro, hydro, hydrology calcs.
Yes, there were.
That went into that, but no hydraulic pipe sizing calcs that I had ever been, you know, made aware of or seen. So in my opinion, this was always going to be engineered as part of, you know, leading up to the construction of it. What, why that didn't happen on our end was because the DOT project was handling it. The DOT engineers, VHB, was working for the DOT. We had meetings and, and Zoom meetings with them and they were accounting for the project flow. We shared information. It was when, it was when what they put in the ground at 18 inch, very late in the game was, you know, brought to our attention, Munir's attention, who brought to my attention. The biggest regret that I have is that we never informed this board that that was being handled by DOT, that DOT was going, was incorporating that into their plans. But then because DOT, on their own accord, without letting us know, decided that, nah, we're going to do an 18 inch pipe. And we asked them, why didn't you make us aware, make aware of that? You know, we've had conversations. We never got to get answered because, well, because we've asked DOT. That's pretty much what they said. So then, you know, whole sorts of thoughts started happening like, geez, we really, you know, we really should have, you know, brought the ZBA, have the speed on this issue. And that's, that's my biggest regret. I'd be completely honest with you. So calculations were done to justify what needed to, to be to support the flow and conveyance of the stormwater. Um, but the infrastructure that's in the ground, so for example, manholes, the manholes that are in the ground can support a 30 inch pipe. So efforts were made based on calculations. Fortunately, the calculations support what will happen. Um, the manholes can be utilized because they, what's in the ground can support up to a 30 inch pipe. Where, where it changes to a 36, those manholes will have to be replaced as part of the infrastructure work. It, it may not, you may not care. You may not, may not seem like a big deal to you, but it's, it's part of the work. You know, if you had a house with two by fours and it should have been two by sixes and you can, you know, find a way to keep the two by fours and sister them up, you know, it's probably something you would do if you can make it work. So there's, you know, the fair number of manholes in the ground constructed helps the work get done faster, less disruption. Um, so that, that was part of the basis of, you know, what size pipe do we need, you know, that will support the runoff, conveyance of the runoff, took into account the Main Street drainage, the project drainage, took into account, you know, the swamp and how that discharges, the flooding impacts with the whole system working together, make sure the flooding impacts were analyzed, which they were. Um, the result was, I feel like if that original 36 inch pipe was engineered, we'd end up with the same result. It'd be a 30 and then eventually a 36 when other parts of the system join in.
All right. Um, you know, I, you know, this idea that, that MassDOT was handling it, uh, it seems to me that there, there should have been some sort of contracts or documentation to support that. And apparently there wasn't. But I think it just goes to the sloppiness that, that we've seen. Um, you know, from, pretty much from the start. Um, you know, I, I take you at your word, Steve. Um, but, but it, I, I struggle. I struggle to think that something as significant as, you know, I, I don't know, it's, well, the 36 inch pipe, Jeff's calculation is about a half a million dollars. There's got to be a million dollars worth of work was being left up to Mass DOT to do out of the goodness of their heart. Really? But as, as we said, we'll, we'll just, we'll move on. Um, so the other issue that I think we need to address is in the, um, previous notice of project change from 2020, um, it amended condition J1. It basically says that, um, the deadline for completion of offsite drainage from prior to the issuance of the second building permit to prior to the commencement or concurrent with the Main Street reconstruction project. Well, we, we've completely missed, um, the Main Street reconstruction project. So I think that that condition J1 needs to kind of be put back, um, to the way it was. So I, you know, basically this notice of project change needs to undo what was said in the previous notice of project change and basically put J1 back to saying, um, I'm not sure why we said prior to the issuance of the second building permit, but in my mind, this should be done prior to the issuance of any more building permits. So any building permits. So I think that's the other thing is we need to have, um, condition J1 modified so that, um, the offsite drainage is completed prior to the issuance of, uh, any building permits. Uh, so those are the two things that I identified that in my mind, we need to have, um, taken care of, um, as, as part of this.
Good question about just Bill's last one. How, how long do you think it'll take them to do this whole thing?
About three weeks, three to four weeks.
Munir, move closer to the mic. That's okay.
And, and there's going to be an extra bond for this?
I, I, I think we need to have a bond.
So, I mean.
To cover if, if, if 30 inches doesn't work and we need to replace with 36, I, I want a bond. And Jeff has calculated it's about $570,000, if I remember correctly.
But on the building permits?
Wait.
I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, is it a big deal to not give them one or two?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it is. This, this developer.
No, just don't.
Does whatever the heck they want.
No occupancy until this is done. That's all.
Nope. No, I, uh, no way. No way. These, these guys do whatever they want. They have thumbed their noses at this board, at Bob Burger, at the town, at the neighbors, at everybody. No. I don't, I'm, I'm a no if, if, if I don't get that condition. They don't do anything until this stuff is in the ground.
The only reason I'm bringing that up is we could kind of use the numbers.
Nope. Nope. Um, I, no, this, this has got to be taken care of.
But if it's three to six weeks?
No, I know. It's probably not a.
Yeah.
It's not going to move the needle.
Right. All right.
I have a question.
Mr. Yom.
I have a question regarding the onsite, uh, drainage, the manholes are, you, you mentioned that they could, they were designed to carry a 36 inch pipe.
On-site?
I mean, they're, they're oversized manholes. Are any of them, uh, uh, double?
So what I was referring to is that the manholes that are in the ground that were installed by DOT on Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah. They can handle up to a 30 inch.
What are the manholes to accept the drainage? And as was pointed out, uh, there's a lot of blacktop. There's a lot of, you know, new additional driveways. When we went from 72 to 100.
Yep.
To 50 duplexes, 100 units.
Yep.
Bill, Bill, move closer to your microphone. When you guys clean back, they can't hear you. Sorry.
My criticism when I'm watching them, you know, no one's on the mic. Uh, are there any double manholes onsite up in the project itself?
Uh, I believe there are, uh, I believe there are a couple sets, but nothing along the boulevard. Um, because one of the, you know, the calculations would probably warrant for some double catch basins along the south side of the boulevard because of the.
Right, the sheet.
Because of the contributing area. But because of this design, this swale along the road captures that overland flow, brings it to this head wall. This head wall in this depressed area collects it and puts it into the system. So therefore these catch basins along the side of the road don't see a lot of contributing area, just mostly what's, what falls on the pavement of the boulevard drive. Um, there might be, I, we typically provide double, double catch basins in, in low points. And then anytime there's really over, over, you know, an area contributing more than two CFS to a catch basin. Um, I don't, don't believe. It's, it's rare that we don't have doubles in certain, uh, locations?
Yeah. Cause I know in previous projects, uh, there were double catch basins.
Yeah, Elmore Rock Drive, there were doubles because there was a pretty good contributing area.
And the sheet flow, I think you're talking, and this, this appears to be shale. Is that correct? Uh, it's, excuse me, again. It's shale?
There, there is some ledge there.
Yeah.
There's some exposed ledge, but to Steve's point, there's the swell along the south side of the road that captures the, the overland flow coming down the hill, heading toward the street. In the case of Elm Rock, it got into the street and into the catch basins. But here the water will be captured by the, by the swell and brought to the bottom of the hill.
And then distributed from that.
And then goes to a pipe.
Okay.
Yep.
Feel comfortable with that?
I am very comfortable with that. Yes.
I'm going to have a tether.
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Mr. McCusker, early in his discussion, brought up the point of the flooding last year. Yes, the flooding, um, what really burned my butt last year is that the drainage system was in place in Main Street and in the project. It's the catch basin openings that were not made available to receive the flow that caused the flooding in Main Street. So instead of stormwater coming down the hill, getting into the boulevard, it was gravel at the time and the drainage, the inlets to the catch basins could have made, had been open, but were closed up in preparation for, for going farther along instead of leaving them open to deal with the storm close to paving time. And it's just, the water just came down the hill where it would have gotten into the first set of catch basins. It didn't. Then it went downhill farther and then it bypassed that catch basin. And that's why we saw the mess we saw in, um, in, um, Main Street more than anything else. And, and even though there's an 18 inch pipe in Main Street now, I'm comfortable that there is a way to move water from smaller storm events, not the, not the ones we designed for, but there's, there's, uh, water to move, infrastructure in place to move that water into the drainage system during the construction of this. Whereas when this project, um, was being contemplated two years ago or 10 years ago, there was nothing in Main Street except the old drainage system and, and no direct connection from the Fisherville drainage system to Main Street until something was done on Main Street.
Do we know what the weather conditions or rainfall rate was for that storm? Cause I remember it was a series of storms.
I have it in my files. I, we use the National Weather Service, um, closest, the closest form, uh, official weather station is at Worcester Airport. Um, there, there was, was some data I was gathering out of Northbridge, but there was like somebody's backyard, but they were trained to some extent and did some reporting that got us some localized stuff. It can vary between Worcester and, and, and Northbridge or Worcester and, and Grafton.
But, but your calculations are what a 25 year storm or something?
What we actually did in the, in the rational method, the pipe sizing, we use what's called a 25 year design storm. But it's not, it's a rainfall event that doesn't occur, the, the, the duration of the rainfall event is a function of how long it takes rainfall to hit the ground and get into the drainage system. In other words, it, we start at five minutes is the minimum and go up to probably a couple hours. Usually we're working in the five hour to 30, uh, five minute, 30 minute range. The, the shorter the rainfall duration, the higher the intensity. And that's, that's how we deal with it. And we're talking just inches per hour. Um, when I use the weather service data, I look at the rainfall and I look at the time increment and best I can do is average it, inches an hour over whatever period of time. Um, in the TR 55, and this is what we use for land development. It's accepted whether somebody uses software X or software Y, it's all based upon this TR 55 method that came out in the eighties. And it's, um, it uses what we call a synthetic rainfall event. It lasts for 24 hours. It's not uniform rainfall like it is under the, um, rational method. There's four different, um, what they call type storms and that's the distribution over, over the 24 hours. And the East Coast where we're at is a type three. The point is it starts out raining a little bit and a little bit. As it gets to around 12, hour 12, it gets real intense and then it peters out. And, and, um, and the point is, um, lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. But we designed, oh, using that TR 55 method, we look at the two year, the 10 year and the 100 year. And many engineers also run a 25 year. But again, that 25 year is different than a rational method 25, or can be. What we did for this project in early on, this is why I took Steve and I some back and forth, is I wanted to know the 100 year storm coming out of that infiltration basin. What's the peak flow from it? When does it occur? All right. I looked at, it's 12.54 hours or, uh, so 0.54 hours after the middle of the peak. I backed that out and we worked to figure out the intensity that was a 64, 60 minute, 68 minute duration to get the peak rate to put it into rational. And, um, the point was that's, you know, we run the two, 10 and 100. I lost that train of thought too. I'm sorry. But, uh, the thing is, going back to looking at that 68 minutes, I could say, okay, when the peak's coming out of that outlet structure at the top of the hill, how much rainfall is being introduced by all the different catch basins everywhere between there and the South Grafton Elementary School to add up those flows? And it was this situation that we looked at, that I saw about the 55% use of the capacity. Whereas early in a, in a shorter storm, when, when we were talking, um, uh, we were talking, um, you know, the first few minutes of rainfall, the first 10 minutes of rainfall, that's actually the, the more critical event. And, and but keep in mind, it's not just Main Street. It's Main Street and the overflow structure, the bypass structure, in the boulevard entrance, the main contributive factors to the peak rates. And realistic numbers is probably going to run in the 80% capacity, not the 94 or so, but still it's getting up there. It's getting up there. And I remember that piece of thought, um, comparing apples and oranges for the duration, the times of concentration we were looking at. for the duration, the times of concentration we were looking at, the times of it takes rainfall to hit the ground and get to the inlet of the first, of, of, of the catch basins, we're talking the five to eight minute range. So when I looked at the, the, um, TR fifty-five, the hundred year storm event, says, okay, what are we gonna use for rational? The twenty-five year rational didn't quite get there, was pretty close. The fifty year rational was overly conservative to mix in that, to mix with the flow from the TR fifty-five one hundred year, but it was conservatively high, so that's why we see some fifty year rational method calculations mixed in the TR fifty-five flow. Again, we are to stay on conservative. Boards hire reviewers like us, cuz there are a few engineers out there that like to be very liberal with their designs when they have to. Certainly not the case with Turning Point Engineering, Steve McGonald, O'Gonald, but.
So, I think, bottom line, what you're saying is that there would be, this, the system as designed can handle an event like last summer with plenty of.
With ease.
Capacity.
Yes. When it's properly operating and properly capturing water.
Yeah, because that rainfall was not even very close to the intensity that, of that the system was designed for. It, it's, it is difficult sometimes to know the exact rainfall you'd get, you know. You met, you remember what the rain gauge said? It was, I thought it was, I thought it was about three inches of rain, you know, locally. In Jeff's report, which I happen to have, you know, cuz we do the same thing, you look at, you know, the nearest, you know, uh, and in this case, it was the, the NOAA Observation Station at the airport and it was half an inch. Now, we know we got more than a half an inch. We had a, we don't, coincidentally, we had another job, you know, in Northbridge where, uh, geez, we got over five inches the summer before. And, uh, we know that locally, you know, another engineer on a budding project wrote a letter that said there was, you know, half an inch and me and Jeff knew, you know, just from being in Northbridge on this one site, it was like five inches of rain. It was incredible, you know, but that's what happens with, you know, localized rainfall like that. So yeah, you know, it's gonna be difficult unless you have the measures in place to understand. But we know locally from the rain gauge, it's about three inches, uh, at least in the project site. I think the point that, uh, that Jeff was making, yes, it's only an eighteen inch pipe in Main Street now, but there was nothing before. And if the infrastructure along the Boulevard entrance, which is installed, was opened up and allowed to receive the water, we wouldn't have seen the impacts we saw on Main Street because it was like boom. The water was in Main Street. There was no method of collection. Um, prior to Main Street, it just, it all ran down, um, into Main Street. You know, there were a couple of catch basins opened up at the bottom, but it was flowing, you know, way too, too fast and, you know, not in the right path to get into those structures and, um, but, uh.
And on that day, um, I was out there and it was one somewhat functioning catch basin looking into the project on the right side, the one on the left wasn't capturing much.
Yeah.
And in Main Street, there was, um, blockage of, of many of the catch basin inlets over by, um, um, the street that way to the west. I, I keep calling the, the former Seaver Brothers Garage. There's catch basins, a couple of catch basins over there.
Mariave.
Weren't taking, I'm sorry.
Mariave.
Thank you, Mariave. Yes, it was not taking any flow, um, or very little flow, which caused ponding in the street.
Right, they, yeah, the flow that would normally be collected, they had bypassed those cuz the, it was an active DOT construction site too.
No, I don't have any additional, uh, any, Paul Canoyer, uh, did make some comments.
So I have two comments, um, one from Fire and one from DPW, and if I didn't forward them to you, I'm sorry.
We got DPW.
I got, I, and I probably, I forgot Fires. I'm sorry, I will, I will forward them to you. Um, so Paul's basically says, I'll read it. The Department of Public Works offers the following based on the proposed drain improvements with a planned date of March second, twenty twenty-three. The area of work where the existing pipe will be removed and replaced was recently part of the town's Main Street Improvements Project. The area was excavated last summer and drainage work, which was part of the project was completed. This work has been allowed to settle over the past eight months and through one freeze thaw cycle as required by the town's road opening permits. With the second and final construction season of the Main Street project about to begin, extraordinary conditions must be imposed. With this in mind, we respectfully request that the following be part of the conditions for the modified permit conditions. When the thirty and thirty-six inch pipe is installed, approved gravel shall be brought to a maximum of halfway up the pipe, making sure that the trench is wide enough to allow a plate, compactor, or other compaction equipment acceptable to the town to easily be maneuvered on both sides of the pipe. Controlled density backfill or flowable fill shall then be placed from halfway, from the halfway point of the pipe to a minimum of one foot above the top of the pipe. The starting elevation for the controlled density backfill placement may be adjusted at the discretion of the town's representative based on existing conditions. During the excavation process, materials removed from the trench area shall be segregated to be reused at similar elevations to minimize the chance for different settlement and expansion characteristics. The DPW would also request that a representative of the town of Grafton be present during the drainage improvements and that the cost of the town representative be borne by the applicant. So I received that from Paul, um, the morning of March thirteenth. And then I received from the Fire Department, um, also on the thirteenth. The Fire Department has the following comments regarding the Fisherville Terrace Main Street Drainage Project. The Fire Department requires all work to be completed on Sunnyside Terrace, including backfilling, compacting, and asphalting of the trench prior to any work beginning in front of ninety-three Main Street Fire Station Number Three. Fire apparatus must be able to respond from the rear entrance of the station parking lot onto Sunnyside Terrace at all times while construction takes place in front of the fire station. At no time shall firefighters or fire apparatus be delayed by construction. Eric J. Matthew, Fire Chief. And I will forward, I'm.
No, that's fine. That's an excellent point.
Indented this week and I just didn't get it.
Yeah, I'm actually glad that they made that point. That makes perfect sense. You can't have both areas, you know.
Yeah.
Not passable. Yeah, that's great. And we don't object to any come, uh, Paul's.
Okay.
DPW's comments. It's very logical.
What is controlled density backfill? That, that like crush bank rounds?
It's, uh, it, it meets a special sieve analysis. I mean, most people would just use flow fill, which is like a liquid, you know.
I know.
Yeah, you know what flow fill is, yeah.
It's another name for flow fill.
Yeah, cuz he says controlled density backfill or, or, or flow fill, but I mean, I've only, usually a controlled density fill is flow fill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and there's excavatable and non-excavatable. In other words, how much cement they put in.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board? Yeah. Yeah, do you wanna, actually, do you wanna just?
Bernie, you wanna just come sit at one of the mics and you.
Yeah, right next.
Yeah, right here, next to.
No voting.
Hold your right hand up.
Actually, we need an alternate.
Yeah, we do need an alternate, Bernie.
He looks pretty good there, Bill.
Bernie, guys, the twenty-first street. One thing they haven't addressed, and I was here along with no one else except this young lady. From the project when it first started. And the reason why that they're going with all this pipe is because it's not only the ledge up there. They originally were gonna put in underground caverns to let the water drain. This is an, they did a geological survey. It's an end of a glacier. There's nothing in that ground that'll absorb water, period. That's why the heavy drainage. In all the different calculations, the thirty, thirty, the three foot pipe that came across because the trees have been all cleared. There's also runoff that goes towards the brook. They planned at one point to put retention ponds on that side, which is nothing in these plans at all. To, to not put that in, they decided to put this overflow pipe on the brook. Now you're going to a smaller pipe on that instead of the thirty-six inch pipe. And now the water on that side of the hill is running into the brook, which means more water in the brook, which means more water flow, which you haven't calculated into this once at all, except that you're gonna make the pipe a little bit bigger.
We did. We, we accounted for that.
Well, you didn't say it. And that was all, this, the water coming down that hill, it's not just coming down the hill. That's a steep hill. It's coming down under pressure. And that's gonna start flowing, wanna flow back to the brook as much as the other way, unless you do the right calculations, put the right turns in the pipe. You can't go straight into it. I've worked on a lot of pipes over the years. I still think the thirty-six inch pipe, but they have to go bigger on the brook side. That's not gonna be a big enough pipe. You're talking a two foot pipe instead of a thirty inch pipe. That's what you said, right? Is that what you said? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, this is a twenty.
You're gonna build, you're gonna build a wall in that special catch basin.
You have the manhole here.
For the overflow.
Correct.
But you said you're gonna put a two foot pipe in.
From this manhole to the manhole in front of the project, twenty-four inch pipe.
Cuz of all the excess water coming down the brook from the other side of the hill that the trees have been cleared off of, you, no one ever mentioned on that. They also mentioned when the, originally was that all the roof drains were gonna be tied in to the pipes because there's no runoff on that ground. It's not gonna absorb the water. I have heard nothing about that here about the roof drains being detached that drainage. All things that were in the first permit was agreed to and then.
The reason you haven't heard it talked about is cuz we haven't really talked about any of the drainage onsite because that was kind of an earlier.
Well, it means more water going into the system.
Right, so, but it is all accounted for, sir. All, all impervious services are accounted for.
Water coming from the roof into that drain.
It runs on the ground and collected by the drainage system. We don't expect a lot of infiltration.
Yeah, and then it's gonna run off the ground into everybody's neighborhood. Like, that's the reason they had the pipes going to the pipes.
Nope, it's, it's actually collected by the onsite drainage system and then connected to the main.
The hill tips in more than one direction.
Yep, it mostly, and, and you're absolutely right, it does. That's why the drainage system, uh, is designed to collect it in multiple directions.
A lot of the water, for example.
On the brook side, so the house is on the backside of the road, so it's gonna run onto the ground and run down to the brook.
There's actually less water going to the brook in a developed condition than a pre-developed condition because a lot of the water that would flow there in an undeveloped condition is now gonna be captured by the drainage system and routed through detention basins where it can be held and detained.
Trees there to hold it anymore.
Which is why we designed detention basins because it accounts for the increase in runoff that occurs when you add impervious surfaces and you remove pervious surfaces.
So where does the brook cross Main Street?
Uh, well, that, there was an existing twenty-four inch culvert pipe here, so the brook comes down, uh, and then it enters a, a culvert pipe and it, and that's where this bypass manhole was kinda like doghouse, set over and into the existing twenty-four inch culvert pipe. So the water still flows through that twenty-four inch existing old culvert pipe, except when the flow causes the elevation, the, the water in, in the manhole to rise over a certain height of the wear wall, then it be allowed to flow down Main Street. That had never happened before. All the flow went back to the swamp area, which caused the flow.
And that's why we had flooding all the way down the other end and that was the reason why they put that pipe in is to take it and stop the flooding. And you're putting a smaller pipe in.
Well, putting a pipe in that didn't ever existed before, sir.
And we had flooding before.
Right, so now we're.
Development's gone.
So now we're putting the pipe in and alleviating the flooding.
It's not big enough.
Going from zero inches to twenty-four inches.
And then when the pipe connects to the project, that's when it, when it's upsized to a thirty. When we collect a certain amount of flow from the Main Street, just Main Street itself and what contributes to Main Street, it causes it to go to a thirty-six.
So.
It's not big enough.
Jeff, can you just comment on the, the water flow through the brook and?
Certainly. We went through this about three or four years ago and I was. I, I, I was, three or four years ago, we revisited, I should say, the, the original intent back in twenty-ten and I was here.
Thank you. You said you had a lot doing.
Yeah, I, I was here. I sat through all those hearings, um, or many of them, I should say. The, the concept of the bypass structure, I don't remember if it was in twenty-ten era or not. I think it was because it was a big selling point. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
I remember seeing calculations, more detailed calculations about three years ago. The calculations show that the twenty-four inch flow, existing twenty-four inch culvert across, uh, Main Street has a capacity of so much. Doesn't matter how much water you can put into it. It can only convey so much until you build up pressure. I think the number was seventeen point something cubic feet per second, CFS. On the overflow conditions, ten CFS of that flow is gonna go down Main Street now. Only seven of the seventeen is gonna continue to the quote unquote swamp. Um, to this gentleman's point, he brings up some very good points about how much flows west to the brook, how much flows to the north. All those things were, were addressed at a preliminary level in twenty-ten. In more detail, much more detail, um, when I think the seventy-six units were revised in the new engineering firm Andrew Survey guy I'm on board. Um, they were revisited again with the NPC from, to, to a hundred units when there was a slight increase in impervious area. But yet, the, it, the infrastructure, the pipes, the impoundments and all that could handle it. There needed to be reconfiguration of one of the outlet control structures, which was done before the construction plans by Turning Point Engineering were signed. The calculations, the, the record shows the, the issues brought up were in fact addressed. I have reviewed those personally and with staff. Um, there were three different scenarios originally floated back in twenty-ten. The first was that every, now, every Main Street property that abuts this on the south side of Main Street was analyzed for peak rates of runoff and there was gonna be a level spread to take a little bit of water and send it to each of those properties. That went over like a lead balloon.
I pointed at the house.
Then, exactly. That's exactly what they were. The second, the second, um, situation, yep, we're gonna infiltrate onsite, hundred percent, up to and including a hundred year storm. Well, if we go back to two thousand and four, when there was a different development proposing this project between here and, and in Sutton, I had good knowledge of the land, had reviewed a lot of that. We knew they couldn't infiltrate. That too went over like a lead balloon. And the solution was to impound what you can onsite. And then even though with empowerment, it doesn't make it go away, it just holds it back temporarily. There needed to be a place to release. Unlike most development projects where there's a wetland, a river, a stream, or something to discharge to, there was nothing here except a, a future Main Street drainage system. And here we are today, talking about it.
If you recall, the original approval had a large detention basin here.
Yep.
Test pit showed that it was pretty shallow depths to ledge, but it required like a fourteen foot excavation for the detention basin into ledge. You know, when we took over the projects when I was at Andrews, we knew that, you know, that's what led to the, was, you know, the major redesign of the drainage system because it just wasn't practical. But we also know that the conditions imposed on that permit kinda required that at level of engineering to, to make the mod, those changes. That's what Jeff was, you know, kinda talking to, that evolution of the drainage system.
Three feet to ledge down there.
Three feet to ledge, yeah.
So, I guess my, my take from that is that there's sufficient diversion, I don't know, to the east?
Yeah, I mean, kinda, kinda west and then, and then easterly, yeah. I mean, there isn't anything that isn't, you know, that, that's overlooked and that isn't accounted for, you know. There's, there's, there's flow that lands and is collected in Main Street itself. There's, there's brook flow, there's flooding impacts from the swamp. Then when they all kinda converge and get in the system down to the east by Sunnyside Terrace, all part of the, part of the analysis um, and, and the sizing calculations, um, I can't think of anything, you know. And eve, and even going back a little bit in time when the project was originally approved and then subsequently, you know, modified, the impacts, if you recall, the impacts on every property were analyzed. The rare property line was analyzed for every abutter. And, you know, it was required that we showed an improvement and the improvement is obvious because the water that flows to their properties now is intercepted and collected and bypassed through the pipe system, so. But the calculation showed that at each abutter's property line, there was a reduction in, in, in flow. So even on a, on a very microscopic level, a lot of analysis took place here. And rightly so, like, like Jeff said, you know, usually you've got a stream or a wetland or a pond to discharge to and, you know, very little concern, but, you know, not, not the case here and a lot of thought and consideration and involvement from everybody, input from everybody, input from neighbors, the board members, grades engineering, multiple engineers. You know, I think has ultimately brought us to probably the, the best possible scenario, um, from a stormwater collection system.
I just have one additional question. Uh, you mentioned.
I just have one additional question. Uh, you mentioned earlier that swale which you're now showing in that colored, how, how big is that swell?
Uh, at the bottom, I think it's at least two to three feet wide.
Okay.
Yeah, graphically, it looks about two to three feet wide.
That'll be a swell with riprap rock in it or?
It's gonna be grass, but it has riprap check dams, so little dams along the way that don't allow the water to pick up too much velocity and cause scour.
Any other comments? Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Your input.
Anything else from the-
Is there any other input from the board?
So, so, I, I do have, I do have one question and maybe wake up, uh, Burger at this point. It, I, you know, we're here because of a cease and desist. And quite frankly, I've lost track of where we stand with that and whether there are other issues that remain outstanding with respect to that cease and desist. And I, 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 the attorney wants to comment or?
Yeah, and Mr. Burger can correct me, but my recollection is that the, the threshold matter was Graves Engineering blessing the revised Main Street plan and this board having a comfort level with Graves Engineering's confirmation that the engineering was sound. And, uh, once that was resolved, and there are other continuing conditions that the applicant's aware of, um, we've taken steps to address concerns about early arrival times, um, maintaining, uh, stability onsite with general SWIP and NIPD's requirements, um, as well as cleanup of the spillage or some of the sediment that flooded across the street into uh, the wetland area. And we did immediately meet with the Conservation Commission, um, and took care of that. We CC'd the board on, on correspondence, so.
Was, was condition H two the surety for stabilization of the site? So, uh, prior to any construction activities applied, it was supposed to be a tri-party agreement, um, to stabilize the project site. So my understanding is that never happened?
It, it was, uh, it was put up, Attorney Hill, I don't know if Dennis was briefed on that, but that's in, it's two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that's, uh, posted as a bond.
So that was posted, okay.
Yes.
Um, so that I just maybe kick it to Bob then, through, through the chairman, you know, do you agree, I mean, if, is, is this design and, and approval of the drainage changes, is that the only outstanding issue with respect to the cease and desist?
It is, it is, through the chair.
You know, so I, I, I think at this point, you know, if, if we're in agreement that we, you know, the board approves of this change and, you know, I, my, I'd like to see a decision drafted, um, by Attorney Hill or his, you know, his associates, that then we can vote on at our next meeting, you know. I, there's a number of conditions, right? There's, I think we need to get these conditions that, um, Mr. Yeoman summarized out of, uh, Paul Canoyer's mail. I referenced a couple of changes that need to be made with respect to, I think it's, what, J-two and I-one or something like that.
I-seven?
Yeah, I, I-seven and J-one. Um, you know, I, I, I'd like to see a, a decision drafted and that we can then vote on at our next meeting.
Well, it actually may speed things up if you wanna do a first draft and send it to, to Dan Hill.
I wanna make sure Mr. McCusker's comfortable. Um, and I, you know, I know that what's happened over the last eight months um, has affected the neighbors, uh, breached the board's trust on certain things. Um, you know, Steve has explained some of the history from his perspective and, and he was the point person dealing with DOT and, and, you know, he had some personal circumstances that didn't allow him to keep his eye on exactly what was going on, when it was going on at the time. And we've, we've tried to express to this board that we have a long way to go, a very long way to go, um, to get this project complete. So we have to gain your trust. And, uh, you know, we've, we've taken the seven, six months to work with Graves to, to get to the point where Jeff's comfortable. Um, we can work out a bond situation. As a matter of fact, I look at the permit, frankly, I think I-seven would allow you to do that anyway. Um, I agree that it would make sense and, and I, I think Munir would agree, the fifty-fourth occupancy permit was a vestige of the prior number. It makes sense to update that. Um, you know, we, we wanna give you a comfort level, uh, cause we have to work together for a long time. We were hoping that we could start, start work again. Um, there is a bond in place right now that, uh, would, would ordinarily at this point, since the site infrastructure is complete, be eligible for release. Um, you know, to give this board some comfort level that i-if we, if we were, if the board would allow us to lift the stop-work order and go ahead and pull building permits and get going, you know, we've, we've been blessed with a relatively mild winter. Um, and we've been, we've been patiently waiting to get this board's approval before we go forward. But if there's some way to at least just that bond that's in place, um, hold that until the infrastructure and the road is, is installed. And, you know, obviously, you, you know, Mr. Burger, uh, is on call at any moment. If, if there's site instability or if there's flooding, um, we're always at the, the town's mercy on these projects. So, you know, we, we understand that and we wanna be at the point where you, you trust the applicant to, you know, continue with construction without abandoning what we've committed to do in these plans. That I think would be our only ask. Like I said, I, I think, you know, the bonding, you, you could, you could clarify I-seven and just say, including, you know, potential replacement of, of the pipe to adequate sizing in, in, uh, in Main Street. Again, it's already there, you know, I think, I think the board could compel that and we, you know, it's, it's a condition that's in there. So I, I think our only ask would be, you know, i-if, if at this point, um, we, we've tried to satisfy every request, we, we went right to the Conservation Commission, um, we've addressed the other concerns that, that Mr. Burger had raised, we, we waited patiently to come before this board, we, we acquiesced to a full notice of project change to get the neighbors involved, you know, rather than arguing that, that the change wasn't substantial. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to get back in the board's good graces, so. Um, you know, I don't know, Munir, if you have anything to add?
I mean, whatever problems we have, we've been, all the drains that we got installed, we had inspected there from Graves Engineering. Now, and then whatever issues we had with the flooding, we tried to take care of it right away. Plus, um, we've, after that rainstorm and we got the road paved, we've had almost the same size of rainstorms and it's been, it held up really well for the whole site and no runoff on Main Street.
I do have one question from somebody watching the meeting.
Sure.
Steve Paylor, three High Point Drive. Who is responsible to determine what constitutes a failure of the drainage system? How many times does the system need to fail before the bond kicks in and the proper system is installed? And will there be an additional bond after replacement if the first system fails?
If I may, Mr. Chair, and I-
Are you gonna respond?
So I, I, I'm just looking at the, the language that's in the permit as it currently exists and, and, you know, we would be subject to this language, uh, since it's already in there, it wasn't subject to amendment. And, and it talks about, um, to secure the construction of the stormwater management facilities and to ensure proper operation and compliance with the DEP's stormwater management standards for a period of two years following the issuance of the fifty-fourth, which certainly would need to be updated. The applicant shall post a bond and the amount shall be sufficient to make any repairs, improvements, or adjustments to the stormwater management system to affect such proper operation. So I think the standard would be compliance with the DEP's stormwater management standards. Um, and, you know, I, I, I think-
But I, I think that my interpretation of that is that it, it refers to the, um, onsite stormwater drainage system, not the, that that's in the Main Street.
Yeah, and I think we could certainly, I think that clarification is, is logical, um, and, and-
Well, I think instead of clarifying that though, to, you know, just add a, a separate condition specific to the Main Street, um, improvements.
Yeah, something along those lines. And I think that's one of the reasons I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm leaning towards, let's, let's get a decision drafted that we can look at.
You're talking about the six hundred thousand additional bond to replace the thirty-inch pipe if it does not work.
Right.
And, you know, so I think that has to be specifically in there as an increase in the bond.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm trying to get my head around, and, and Bob, this is, maybe you, you're involved with this as well. You know, if we lift a cease and desist, what can be done? Um, and then, you know, there is this, um, the offsite drainage, in, in the permit now, uh, offsite drainage is completed before the issuance of the second building permit. Not sure why we did that.
I think I've got that one.
I, I mean, it's probably to let him get a model home up or something, that's usually how, we usually do those sorts of things. Um, but, but anyways, so what can they do? If, if the cease and desist is lifted, what can they do that doesn't require a building permit? I guess I'm, that's what I'm not really sure on. Why is it so important to have a building permit? Is, is-
You're asking me what they can do without a building permit?
Yeah.
Once, once the cease and desist-
Once the cease and desist is lifted.
They, they can continue with their, um, their offsite lighting. They can work on the lots without digging a foundation. It's, it's mostly infrastructure.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The major infrastructure is in, in Phase One, the Boulevard entrance and the Small Loop Road. In my opinion, except for constructing the offsite drainage, constructing the water booster station, there's not much else to do unless they have a building permit in hand. Unless they're allowed to go to Phase Two, and I urge the board not to do that, cause there's still a lot of temporary stabilization that needs to be done in Phase Two just to keep erosion from occurring while the work this summer occurs in Phase One. The west side of Phase Two, um, there's been some earth activity over there that, that really needs to have some kind of vegetation or stump grindings or something on the slope. Uh, the, the silt fence or perimeter erosion controls on the west side need to be fixed. And when you look into the project and you see that main slope between the Boulevard entrance and up to Phase Two, that slope needs to be stabilized. Those are, those, the west slope and that slope I just referred to between Phase One and Phase Two are the major erosion problems out there that they really shouldn't get on until the groundwater seepage conditions subside and we get into, um, vegetation growing, which is a couple of months away.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I, 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 I would really like to see the offsite mitigation work resolved before anything else gets done, anything else significant. This was supposed to have been done quite a long time ago. Um, it wasn't, for whatever reason. I'd like to see it get done first. And, and, you know, I think you need to understand, there is a serious trust problem, okay? This town became aware of trucks showing up at shortly after six in the morning right next to, within a hundred feet, less than a hundred feet of where people were sleeping. You know, and backing up a hill, eighteen-wheel diesel trucks backing up a hill with their, with their beep, beep, beeps going, where people have to live. And you were made aware of that. And my family is also in the contracting business, and I know that if we were made aware of something like that, my father or one of my brothers, myself, we would have been onsite at five AM making sure that nobody showed up the next day. What did you do? Nothing. In fact, your contractors were there the next day, prior to seven o'clock, when you were told not to do that. So no, I don't trust anything. And now that it happened multiple times, we actually had to send Tommy down there to sit across the street and watch. I drive by just out of the blue on a different day and there they are again. So, yeah, there's a serious trust problem, all right? This drainage was supposed to be done by now. Get the drainage done and then let's talk about moving on from there. That's my opinion.
Can I add something to that? Last week, they were up there putting, uh, guardrails up against your, your, your order. You weren't supposed to be up there doing that. I talked to Bob and he said he was gonna call you and tell you to stop. They're still doing work up there. Guardrails weren't part of the stabilization.
It's, it's a safety issue, cause there's random people driving around over there. And there's, we just did it on that one hill over the, the guardrail.
The point is, thank you. You didn't go to the town and ask for it. You're doing it. That's what he's bringing up as far as-
Yeah. I don't think addressing his, I don't think addressing his safety issue is a-
It was coined off and there's still people driving, still people driving around over there.
But that, I mean, that's something that could have been communicated, that what you're doing and why. Instead of, I, I mean, I, I don't think anyone on the board was aware of it until brought up.
Bob, were you aware of it before it happened?
I talked to you last week, remember?
No, before it happened.
No, not, no. I was not aware of it. Before it happened, no.
I mean, I, I agree, Steve. It's, it's a safety issue, should be taken here, fine, but there's a cease and desist for crying out loud. Right? That means you're not supposed to be doing anything.
The guardrail, it's not even called for on the plans. It's not like it was like he was doing work on the plans, yeah. I, I, and I agree, you know, a phone call to the building department said, hey, we're gonna address the safety issue, would have been appreciated.
So, and what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see the attorneys draft a, a, a decision that we can review. Uh, we do have a meeting next week. I mean, I've said, um, offline that I really would like to think that that meeting next week would be strictly for Pleasant Street. Um, I think it works better when the first meeting for forty-B, especially one that has a history of some contentiousness. If that's the only thing, but, you know, we could, we could review if, if the attorneys can, can draft something by next week, we could probably review it at the end of it, I think. I think we've discussed enough. I think we know where we stand. It's a case of just, well, let's put a decision together and and make it, you know, vote on it.
Yeah.
That's my thinking.
Oh, I, I like that idea. Any further comment?
One, one question, if I may?
Please.
Before Attorney Murphy and I or Attorney Hill start drafting, um, so that we don't handcuff ourselves this early in the process, cause things may change over the course of the entire development or they may not. Um, when we're drafting, there are alternative types of surety that may be available to ensure that the town's protected. You run into a problem at the end of a project where you're asked to post cash for whatever number. So, you know, depending on the tenor of, of how things go, I just, if, if, when we're drafting it, we could have some flexibility um, in that surety, so that it's not at this moment, we're handcuffing ourselves that it, you know, we're looking at a cash bond, you know, leave some discretion. And one of the alternative options that, that I've, I've, I've worked with other boards is potentially uh, a mortgage against the real estate before it's sold. Um, because that allows us to maintain cash, uh, but this town has security to know that uh, what it needs to make sure is done is done properly.
So I, I think we'll defer to Dan on that and he can recommend to us what, what's appropriate.
I, I agree. Convince Dan that it's okay and Dan will-
As long as they don't have to convince Dennis.
So Bill, if I just summarize, what you're speaking to is that, uh, they do the, uh, the drainage work that we've discussed here this evening. And at the same time, the agreement is being developed to include the points that we've discussed.
No, 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 no. What I'm proposing is that the attorneys go off and draft a decision. So, so we have a notice of project change in front of us.
Right.
That requires a decision.
Correct.
So they draft that decision, presumably the decision is in the affirmative and it contains some conditions
Right.
uh, to update, um, I already forgot, it's I-seven and J-one.
Right.
All right, um, and then also to incorporate Paul Canoyer's that you summarized for us. Um, you know, I, I think, I think so that's a decision, includes all that and then we vote on it. I think one of the conditions that, that, you know, I, I have said, this member of the board really wants the offsite drainage work completed before-
Building.
Building. And, and, and the original decision contemplated that. It said, before the second building permit, well, you know what, I, I, I prefer no building permits, so let's just get it done. Okay, but in, and also there was other language that it should, well, that was in the first NPC, it was supposed to be done as part of the Main Street work and we've already discussed, you know, various reasons why that didn't happen. So this member's feeling is, let's just get it done and then we can move on with the rest, kinda get caught up essentially.
So just, if I may, one point, so, uh, fortunately, Mast Dot had not- So just, if I may, one point. So fortunately Mast Dot had not put down a finished coat last fall. So it's just the base coat and we're able to get into the road. They're looking to come back, uh, starting in April and we don't know exactly what the timing of their work would be. If there's opportunity, because Mast DOT knows what's coming, local DPW knows what's coming. We've heard a lot of testimony this evening about the plan is sound as far as Main Street. If there's opportunity to start that work, can we at least have a determination that we can get going on that? Since that's the goal is to get that done and we wouldn't want to be in a situation where Mast DOT paves the road and we're still waiting for a hearing or-
Well, what, what we're suggesting though is voting on this next Thursday.
Uh, okay. If we can get to it. I just, I, I didn't know if Katrina, I know sometimes her schedule is-
Well, if you guys write the decision and get it to me, I just have to have them sign it. And if it's written and they approve it next week-
They just have to vote on it.
And they vote on it, they can sign it while they're here.
Okay. I just, it's taking longer between hearings, so I wanted to-
Ordering of, ordering of materials, you know?
Well, I mean, it benefits everyone to have it done prior to Mast DOT.
Yeah.
We can find a code down. So we're not trying to delay it.
Sorry, I, I might have missed. I, I, that we can definitely get on for next Thursday. I know there was talk of maybe another hearing, but-
No, what Bill said was normally he'd like to leave it, but if we can get the decision,
Okay.
we will do that at the very beginning. As long as you get us the decision, everybody can read it before Thursday night.
Got it.
And if they're all in agreement, they can vote on it. If they're all here, who's ever not here, I can get them to sign it either that day or Friday. And then I can file it with the town clerk.
Okay. Um, to expedite things, you know, I'm happy, I think you mentioned, maybe we could take the first draft at it.
Yeah, and I'd say-
And I think we understand the points.
I'd say send a draft to Dan and-
I know.
Steve, do they have to do anything with Mast DOT on this?
No, no, it's not a, it's not a Mast DOT jurisdictional road. It was just, uh, I don't know if it was a tip, a tip project. So, uh, you know, partially, partial town funding, town-
When does graft and allow opening, street opening?
We've been talking to Paul. Paul's been pretty flexible because the weather's been accommodating. So, and you know, normally it's April fifteenth, but I think Paul has given us the green light.
Yeah.
Because he knows the sensitivity, time sensitivity of the situation.
So you're clear on-
If Paul's supportive, I, I think that is meaningful as well.
Agreed. Agreed.
You're, you're clear with all of the points that Bill has made?
I believe so.
I mean, it's two sections. It's just two.
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure Main Street surety and the, uh, the timeline needs to be, and actually to clarify, was it supposed to be seventy-five percent of the units or?
I want, I'd like to bump it to a hundred. I'm not, I'm not sure why we're seeing seventy-five and, you know, to be honest, we have a problem with another forty B. We're right at the end and, you know, I, I don't, I don't know why it would be just seventy-five. I, I'd rather see, you know, good for two years past the completion of the project.
The bond. Two years.
Yeah.
And the fire comments and Paul's comments.
Okay.
I will, Chris, I'll email you fire's comments tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
I am so sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. Ninety-nine percent of the time, the fire department has reasonable comments and making sure there's access to the fire station is reasonable.
All right.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
All right.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Guys, good?
Uh, so we're in the middle of a public hearing. Do we need to close a public hearing or do we need to continue to next week? We probably should continue to next week.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
I like the ability to, to communicate if, unless Chris thinks otherwise.
I, I don't know how this particular board handles it. Sometimes, uh, to make it more efficient, you'd close to public comment and there could be dialogue with the applicant, but either way is fine.
Let's just leave it open.
Continue it.
Yeah. Leave it open, continue. So you need a motion to continue. Motion to continue, case number, what is it?
Seven fifty-four.
Motion to continue case number seven fifty-four to-
Seven twenty, or three twenty-three.
March twenty-third at seven PM.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Uh, do a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Continued to March twenty-third at seven PM.
Thank you. Nice to meet everyone in person and be in three dimensions. It's a rarity these days, so.
So a couple of things, whether you want to do minutes tonight or table up, that's fine. At some point, we still need to reorg because we still do not have a vice chair.
Can we do that right now?
And then- Dennis.
Oh, it is?
Your organization. It's been on there since July first.
Where is it? Oh, minutes and we don't-
I have not taken it off. And, uh,
We should, we should, but everyone's here, we should do it.
Um, and number three, I have received two forty-eight cases that came in last week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
Um, so. That's everything.
How many cases?
Two.
Special permit and one variance.
So we have, when does that have to be?
Um, the sixty-fifth day is in May.
So we'll just, we schedule an April meeting?
I mean, that I have for the dates. So, sixty-fifth day for one is May thirteenth. The sixty-fifth day for the other one is like May thirteenth or fifteenth.
So I would say May, either May fourth or, I can't do it. I think I can do April twenty-seventh.
Um, I'm out the first week of May. I've got to move my, well, no, I gotta go move my daughter out and drive her car home because she's going to London. So I, I don't know when I'm going, but I know it's the first week of May.
About April twentieth.
Hold on.
Yeah, I, I can't do the twenty-seventh.
Good night, zoning board of appeals.
Good night. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Good night, Robert.
What, what are we scheduling?
Good night, Dan.
The two forty-eights.
The forty-eights.
April twentieth sounds okay to me.
Good with everyone?
I'm at a count, April twen-, I'm not here, April twentieth.
Matali, are you here April twentieth?
I am.
Okay, as long as we have five.
I mean, is April twenty-seventh better? Can everyone be here? I can make that work.
I can.
Yes, I'm free the twenty-seventh.
Okay, but, um, we should be able to get a, I get precedence over anybody.
I'd prefer the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven?
Okay, let's say the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
All right.
I'll schedule those.
We're gonna table the minutes.
Yes.
All right, so reorg. We don't have a vice chair. I'm not sure if I can, I'm not allowed to nominate, am I?
Not yet. But I'll nominate you for chair because you gotta go first.
I second.
I, I guess we do a roll call vote.
Nice to be popular.
Wait, what? I missed that. What was that?
Oh, sorry.
So I, I nominated Brian for chair and, um, is that your name, Peter? Yeah, Peter seconded it.
To railroad. So-
Yeah.
Roll call-
Welcome back, Peter.
Roll call vote, uh, Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas? I don't wanna vote on myself.
All right. So then, vice chair. Am I allowed to nominate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I nominate Bill McCusker.
Is that called payback?
Second.
And, and Bill and I have had discussions offline about some segregation of the cases. And you all know that Bill is much more versed in forty Bs. So I think the goal would be to have Bill take the lead on the forty Bs or depending on how many we have, at least the first one or two. And then, you know, I, I would take the lead on the forty As and more of the administrative stuff. But I, I think that would be the plan if that's amenable to the board.
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
So, I guess I move to-
You nominate?
I nominate Bill McCusker as vice chairman.
Second.
Made and seconded. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed? Ms. Reed?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Do, is Kay automatically-
No, you gotta nom-, you gotta nominate her again.
Okay.
Kay, are you all right being clerk?
Yeah, it's fine. It's okay.
I'll nominate Kay Reed for clerk, second.
Made and seconded. Um, Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
I suppose.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
We do, um, you know, if anyone knows anyone that, you know, wants to, uh, join our, our little community here, the board, um, we do need somebody.
We do need another alternate.
Do we need one or two?
Just one.
One.
Just one.
You know, I, I, you know, we've, we've got Pleasant Street coming in. I would imagine the Upton Road or whatever, the other one from Eastland Partners is right on its heels.
I was told first or second week of April.
Yeah, so, you know, we've got a couple of forty Bs. I don't know how quickly the Board of Selectmen approved Snow Road and this past Tuesday, that lip, so I don't know how quickly those people will come forward, you know, so, you know.
And then the one over on Centennial.
Yeah, that's probably a little bit further out, but-
Further out, but that one's also on the horizon.
Yeah, unfortunately we got a few of these.
Four forty Bs?
That would be four.
Yeah.
Wow.
I, I think Centennial's out of ways.
Centennial is out of ways, but that is-
I thought there was five.
That's a record.
Well, there's five, but there's a little one over at sixty-five Worcester.
Yeah, I forgot about that. Sixty-five Worcester Street would be a fifth one.
Yeah.
Wow.
You know?
We need an alternate.
Well, you know, it, it, it would help. It certainly would help. Um, thank, thank goodness we still have the ability to do hybrid meetings. I think that helps tremendously.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, we kind of went through this when we were doing Adams Road and, um, Pulte on a Milford Road at the same time. I think Creeper Hill was, came in there, you know, it really got to be a drag on the board. It really kind of got to be a drag on the board. And we lost members. Um, so, you know, we just, it helps to have another alternative. Somebody can't make it and not, you know, you know, to have some people help fill in. So if anyone knows anyone.
How do you, do you, uh, do you advertise or how do you try to find? I know it seems like you have done some notices, right?
Cindy, um, Cindy I'd, um, puts in notices in the paper to advertise and they put it on the Facebook page. So I will talk to Cindy and see if she can advertise again. I, one person did reach out. I sent the person the information and I never heard from them again.
We scared them away. They watched the meeting.
I was just gonna say that.
But I'll talk to Cindy tomorrow and see if her, Amber, can run another, another ad. Because I know they put them in and showing open positions and I, I can't remember when the last time they did it, so I'll ask Cindy.
You know, Bill, those old ones are harder though. Two years for Pulte and Hangerani, two years. Two years for Sotiers on Creeper Hill. Two and a half.
Oh, jeez.
Two and a half years.
Yeah, no, but they were harder. I mean, we, I think we've gotten better at it and even the process has got a little crispier.
Well, the state didn't have that hundred and eighty day.
Yep. Yep, yep.
Two and a half years, imagine that.
Yeah. Yeah.
What for which one?
Creeper Hill.
I need somebody to make a motion.
To adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second?
No move.
Mr. McCusker?
Oh, sorry. I'm tired. It took me a second to understand what just happened.
Oh, good. Can you explain to us? Because I'm not sure what happened.
Ms. Reed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.